Ryan, are you going to give the Pelican Reserve Report?
Okay.
Good afternoon, I'm Ron DePonte from the Pelican Reserve Advisory Committee. You all have a copy of our monthly report, if there are any questions, I will attempt to answer them for you.
I had a question.
Ron?
On page six of the agenda, in the middle of that page, you talk about recent criminal activity.
Yes.
Well, can you tell me what that is? What's going on?
There were two, one break-in and two car thefts in the, I believe it's the Tree S portion of our community, relatively close to Tree Line and Colonial.
Frentino Estates.
Right.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions or comments for Ron? You've done a great job, Ron.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next thing we have is the consent agenda, items 4A and B. Are there any members who would like to discuss either the February 4th minutes or the Stormwater Pond Management Report?
A and B.
Did you have anything? Would you please proceed then, Ron?
Thank you.
4A, give us a page number, sir.
Page 12 on the agenda, second paragraph. Letter of apology, letter of apology to the Hampton Greens, I asked Scott if he would arrange a letter because Tetra Tech haven't been able to get to the restoration of 104 in the timeframe they wanted because of the high water levels. Did such a letter go out to Cal?
He's at line 81, if you...
Yes, line 81, I apologize.
Actually, it's 82.
Letter of apology, you're line 81.
I believe it did. I think Scott sent that out the very next day.
I just didn't know, that's all, I'm following up, that's all, I never saw a copy, I just wondered.
It was one of the last things he did his last day.
Okay.
I can double check on that, but...
Would you be kind enough to send me an email, a copy of that, please?
Sure.
Have we had any?
Yeah.
Did we have any responses from that letter from the community?
I didn't see any.
I have not received any responses from them.
Okay, thanks. Danny, while we're on that subject, when do you think, if you're a weather forecaster, when do you think 104 might begin, please?
For the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech. We've actually talked to extreme divers and I think they're planning on getting back in there this month, the work won't take that long, so...
Thank you. That's all I have on 4A.
Please proceed to 4B.
4B, page 28 of the agenda, there's a picture of Lake 107. And there's a common theme on 107 and I think 106 on the future page, that we are getting issues due to runoff, gutter downspout runoffs. And I know Gary, you're big on this in Pelican as well, and you've been successful in getting the WCI to put them in, good for you. The tough thing is to persuade homeowners to put gutters and downspouts in after the event at their expense, I think that's part of the problem.
That's correct.
And I'm wondering if, can we be creative, Cal? I mean, have you seen this in your other CDD's that you manage?
No.
Okay, I'll hold my question.
That's where we want...
I'm on page 28, Cal.
Right.
Am I quite...
Okay, I passed it. With the gutter downspouts?
I haven't asked my question yet, I just want to, I want to ask you a question, being a CDD manager at 13 other CDD's. It says in the text under the picture that we're having issues with runoff due to lack of downspouts on houses.
Right.
Okay. And the difficulty we have, I mean, is getting residences to put their own, I put my own downspouts in, I just dug the trenches and did it, but not everybody would do that, and not everybody would pay to have it done. Is there any creative way we could look at this to get kind of a wholesale deal with a contractor to offer a special deal to residents to see if they'd do this, at a special price?
Yes. And we've done that, if you look at it at total project, then, you know, you're going to get a reduced rate because of quantity. What we advocate in other communities is that from the LME or the lake maintenances meant into the lake, the CDD picks up that expense. From, on private property, from the outer edge of the LME to the gutter, that that's paid for by the resident. Usually you put a little bubbler box right there, a catch basin, a 12 by 12 basin, it connects into both sides, one end on the CDD side or the lake side runs as deep as you can get it, and the other connects right to the downspout.
I'm just wondering how we can communicate, get a, it doesn't, we can think about this over the next few weeks, but I'm wondering how we can approach people in these situations, say, "Look, we've got a really good deal for you."
We've used two incentives. One is, you know, the really good deal, but working with the homeowners association for that neighborhood.
Right.
And, you know, usually they become an advocate and they help sell the benefits of it. The second is, you know, we tell them that we're offering a solution to prevent damage to the lake bank from your property. We're fixing it, we're taking care of it, and if you don't take advantage now, then you're liable.
Well, that's particularly relevant in these ponds that we've just dealt with.
Right.
We just spent the money to prevent erosion, if it's still occurring, this would be a good time to go to those residents and say, "Hey, we've got a low-cost solution."
Mm-hmm.
Can we do something on that, do you think?
Sure.
What's your, any other opinions on that?
Well, I want to ask, first of all, the picture that we're looking at on page 27, is that an example of an extension of a home downspout into the water?
Well, yes, but it's not one that we would encourage.
You're not going to have very many people that want to do, participate in that.
No, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about a downspout where that goes to a bubble box.
Right, and then from the bubble box it goes into the lake. This is the extension, but that needs to be underground, you shouldn't be looking at that.
Correct.
Thank you very much for that.
Just a suggestion, and I just wondered if any other colleagues on the board would support Cal and then looking into this to see whether we can make an offer to people in these situations.
Let's hear from Mr. Newbauer.
Sooner or later, you have to decide if the people on each of these individual lakes are unwilling to invest in that kind of preventative maintenance, I'll call it, when it comes back to redo the lake, they have to consider the fact, and we should consider the fact, that that cost to rebuild that particular lake is not spread across the entirety of Gateway. Responsibility lies with each one of these owners that surround that pond. So it becomes either, would you rather do it now, or would you rather have a special assessment and we have to do it the next time? It's too casual to just spread this into the budget.
I understand what you're saying, but try and get unanimity or even a majority of folks to agree that when you've got 25, 35, 40 homes around the lake, leaves me with...
Well, that's an easy way of trying to blow off the fact that we're not going to do it, and once again...
No, I'm not trying to blow you up, please don't take that attitude. I'm just trying to get in your head and see if you've thought it through about how, what you do with a single lake that has 35 or 40 homes on it.
You tell the homeowners association, first of all, we're lax on communication overall. And having said that, then we should, A, communicate that to the homeowners association in a polite and amiable way, et cetera, but also in a reasonable business fashion, that we're the ones that are the recipients of making these kind of decisions, and you sit up here and some of the decisions aren't the ones that are the easy ones, but sooner or later, you can't keep looking at the other folk across the street and expecting them to pay for the misdeeds of the people over here.
There's a lot to be said to that. You've primarily got two types of erosion. One is a washout, which is directly attributable to, you know, the lack of gutters or properly maintained swales, whatever. The other is from wave and wind action, which is a community-wide issue and not specific to anything those homes did, but not having gutters causes washouts, you know, which is what I think Mr. Newbauer is suggesting.
My request is to have, ask if the board supports this, is to have you come back to us at some point with an idea of how we can present this, either through an HOA or directly to these homeowners with an idea of what's involved and appeal to their sense of responsibility.
Any objections to that suggestion?
My question is to Danny, and I think, what did we do with Harley's property? Did we do it?
Did we do what?
Did we create the downspouts, the pipes, et cetera?
I don't know.
Did we, with the Harley property, remember all of the, did in fact, at the end, do we in fact have that kind of situation?
Harley's, if I remember correctly, Harley's already had downspouts.
Piping into the lake? I don't, it could be me, I don't remember what anyone...
Not into the, not into the lake, it goes to a bubble up, it goes into a bubble up prior to the lake. So unless on this lake...
Did they then take the bubble up into the lake?
No, I didn't, I don't remember that at all.
No, it does, that one does not go into the lake. It goes into a...
But wouldn't that be, especially with that lake bank angle and that type of thing, wouldn't that be one that, I mean, that to me, with all of the wave erosion coupled together with the runoff?
That particular lake, how, I would have to go back and look, but I believe how that particular lake was set up, right, wrong, or indifferent. Houses come through downspout, out into a piping, into a bubble up, and then it sheet flowed into, like, that being said, that created a lot of problems in the past, and those were some of the continual washouts that Gateway had being corrected, not being corrected by extending pipes out in, but fixing the bubble ups.
So what does the rest of the board think about that, after all the money we've spent on that?
Well, my thought here is, we're embarking on this very expensive mission, we're only a fraction of the way into it. We're going to go out for a $5 million loan, hopefully we get a grant, and we're going to, I'm thinking we need to put together, as we complete each pond, we ought to have a little, we have a little strategy to direct mail shot all the residents and say, "Here's what we've done, now the rest is up to you, and here's a deal. We'd like you to adopt some responsibility as we go through this restoration."
Correct. And that should be part of any pre-planning for improvements.
So it's a little package, I'm asking if you would put that together?
Sure, absolutely.
I have a question, on page 24, there's a bubble up drain that's obviously off the lake bank. And then page 22 has got one that's in the lake, so is the one that's on top of the lake bank connected to the one that's in the lake, is that...
I don't believe so. I'm not sure what that one reflects, because it doesn't look like a bubble up box, it looks more like a basin. On page, you could, let's write...
24, right?
Page 24.
That's a bubble up.
The one on 20, yeah, the 24 is, 22 right there.
Yeah, I've seen that, I'm not, that's not a bubbler, no, it's not a bubbler, I'm not sure what that is.
I was just curious, as we were talking about this and looking at these pictures.
And you can see on the far right, about the middle, there's a washout that's starting to form there, which would indicate that whatever that is, it's not connected to a roof drain.
So what I envisage here is some pictures, a picture of what the finished product would look like, and a little marketing package to go out to the residents around a lake that's been restored.
Margaret already identified it, that one on 24 right there, that's the bubbler.
That's what I...
And then you wouldn't see, but pipes would be running both to the lake at a deep elevation, and then back to, connect right to the downspout.
That's what I did on my own property.
That's the right way to do it.
Are those shared between properties, or does each property have its own bubblers that are connected to the downspout?
We've done it both ways. We usually suggest sharing, but some people don't want to share because they're afraid that their neighbor's not going to maintain theirs and it's going to get plugged up, so, I mean, you can do two, but it's just, one will work, but as long as they're both maintained.
Margaret, are you okay?
Yeah.
With the Rod and Gary suggestion to have...
I agree with you.
Okay. Rob, we're still on 4B, unless you're finished.
I'm done.
Can I just point something out in there?
Please.
Okay.
What page do you want us to...
Let's go to just one page, but, let's see, this is page 27, and all, both top and down, that's Placo that's on there, and those are just like destroying your lake banks.
Yeah, it looks like...
It's an armored catfish that's, you know, you can hardly even kill him with a spear, because they are armored, they're pretty thick, they're pretty nasty, yeah.
Another fishing day.
We've got, we've got a community...
It's like 22 time.
We've got a community that just repaired the lake banks using a cellular confined process, and these Placo, it's been done, it's not even signed off on, and these Placo are already digging underneath that liner and starting to destroy it. The liner's starting to flop around, they're, they burrow into the ground, they're in the lakes that you've already repaired, but the lakes are at such a high elevation and that liner goes down so low, we're not sure what the damage is on those, so we need to get rid of those. And we're starting to develop a program, the best way to do it is to go in and electroshock them, and then just net them out and throw them off to the side. I, you know, they'll float, they're not dead.
How do you do that? Do you mean you just zap them?
Yeah, you zap the lake, and then they'll float, and then you just net them out.
In a series of 12-volt battery...
It doesn't show anything. It just shocks them, and they float to the top, and you only pull out the exotics, you know, tilapia and the, and definitely these, these are even worse than tilapia.
We had an individual come and get rid of some of our tilapia.
Yeah, that was our intern, and he got, he pulled out a couple hundred, but I mean, there's, you've got so many, it's incredible.
How did he go about pulling out those couple of hundreds?
He, he's a young college kid. He was an intern, and we used Gateway as his subject. He actually got in the water, reached into their burrow, grabbed them by the tail and pulled them out and swung them up onto the lake bank.
I'd like to have seen a video of that.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't like with the catfish where they, what do they call them? Where you let them clamp onto your arm and you pull them up, it wasn't that, he grabs them by the, by the tail and pulls them out.
But you can't do that with these, is that what you're saying?
Well, there's just so many of them, and he's not around, we can't find him anymore.
Did he go on the python hunt?
All right.
He went on the python hunt.
That's a woman's compensation claim.
Let's have some water, I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, items 4A and B.
May I have a second? And I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
4-0. That's more humor than we've had here this week. How about discussion item 5A, an access gate to test Cal's name on it, would you help us there?
Well, it's got my name on it, but I'm going to turn it over to April, and she loves the limelight.
To the podium?
To the podium.
Hi, April, you're Operations Manager. Staff has been working diligently, the way that I understand it, at one point in time this came before you to fix the access gates at the pool and the dog park, and I believe the only proposal at the time was ADT, which was, is our current vendor, and staff was directed to go back and get some more proposals, and so we did, and it still came back as we recommend ADT, because they seem to be the least expensive, they're already our current vendor. It was a fairly difficult project to compare apples to apples, because it, each vendor kind of presented their technology, you know, and each had a different twist on the technology that they were going to use for the access control. So ADT is, since they're our current vendor, they're doing the security here in the building, they're familiar with our organization and our needs, and it seemed like the simplest approach to accomplish everything that we needed out there.
Have all the board members seen the summary and the details of the...
Is this the 44-page thing that came to us a couple of days?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, but I did a summary of the proposals, so you wouldn't have to weed through the whole thing.
Do you happen to have any of those with you that we could have in front of us?
I have one, I have one of the large documents.
We can make copies real quick, I've got a copy of the summary.
Is that what you want, is just the summary?
Yeah. Sure. Would you have some of those made for the board members, please?
It's in the packet.
Can you just give us the summary?
Yeah, is it, is it not in your packet?
No, it came separately.
Yeah.
Again, this was one of the late things.
Do you suppose they have any technology to take care of armored catfish?
Yeah, I think your first suggestion was one thing, but it shocks them to be better.
Okay, so, so the...
Get Dan out there with the frog gig.
So the original proposal from ADT, a couple of months ago when you received it, had a total annual cost of $3,094.5, but that did not include a router for the dog park. The router is the equipment itself, and then there's also an ongoing fee for the data that transfers across that. So the new proposal, and we're still requesting a direct purchase, because as long as we plan on keeping it for three years, after we hit our three-year mark, we're actually cheaper to just do the direct purchase because of the ongoing fees. So the new proposal, including all of the equipment, and this also includes new card scanners, and I've also requested a $500 contingency, just in case we get into some little thing, like for instance, the last phone conversation that we had, we were questioning maybe the little buttons where we exit the gates. So any, I was just trying to allow for that, so we can go ahead and get this wrapped up. So the new proposal was a total annual cost of $4,068.1, and the ongoing cost for each year is $1,392, and that includes all of our data. Of course, I talked to Sharif at ADT, he was more than happy to come out and give you guys a demo and be here, but it's gate access, and I wasn't sure exactly how much demo was necessary. We looked at, we looked at a lease option, and it didn't seem, it didn't seem worth the savings for just a few years. I did talk to Sharif, and we do anticipate there's going to be a CPI increase with each of those annual adjustments, but other than that, we had Accurate Electronics came in with a proposal, and their total annual cost was, well, they didn't even offer an ongoing fee, but their total cost was $5,0273, which was still more than the ADT. Another proposal we received was Vector. Clearly, again, I think we're getting into a different type of technology that they were offering, because they came back at $12,000. So clearly, that had to involve some additional perks that we probably don't really need. And then Innovative Security came in at $4,791. I was, I was a little questionable on their monthly hosting fees, because they seemed so low, so I think that maybe the proposal might not have included everything for us.
Board members want to make a motion to approve this, or do you want to wait until we get the items that we saw earlier at home?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Oh, sure, please do.
What's the reliability factor? Let me tell you my questions. What's the reliability factor? Have you spoken to anybody else that uses ADT and that is just overwhelmingly satisfied with it, because if we've had them in the past, but yet we're trying to do an improvement? I'm always kind of partial to vendors that come up with the improvement on their own, rather than after the fact, although I may be misinformed, but that's just a statement. And last but not least, what do we have as far as video surveillance of the pool area?
I am not sure of what we have as surveillance of the pool area. I do believe that cameras was a separate project, it was addition, I think there was an additional amount of research that was needed for the cameras. Then we got involved in security for the building, for this building, so we were kind of straying, and I understand that the gates at the pool and the dog park are not currently functioning. So we started to broaden this project, and we were kind of deviating from the immediate focus of getting the gates and the access fixed right now. So for that, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure, but there is a project on my desk somewhere to look at cameras, but it was, it was going to be broader than just, just the park, or just the pool and the park.
So back to my other question, do we have to handle it via crisis management, i.e. we tell them when things are down and then we try to...
This, what ADT has offered is a full maintenance program, that includes equipment and the software. We did not, to the best of my knowledge, staff did not go out and get references, once we narrowed it down to ADT, because they're a current provider, they're our vendor here, and I asked staff if we ever have any problems with them, and we don't, so that's why we're recommending 82.
I'd like to, go on, Gary, for just a second. When you talk about the maintenance, does that include on-call? In other words, if we're having difficulty with the pool gate, say, can we call them and have them come out and repair it, like, right away without additional cost?
It won't be additional costs, and I'm not sure exactly what their turnaround time is for an emergency call, but I'm not sure what our pool hours are, so I would imagine, I would imagine that they're going to be available when our, when our parks and pool are open, because I think they close at dark.
Could we, in our agreement, then, have some commitment on their part as far as their turnaround time?
I would like to.
I have some questions, if you must continue.
Just one second. April, I didn't see, I don't remember seeing anything in here about commitment on the turnaround time, do you think there is something in here?
I would kind of think if she didn't, I don't know, we'll do some...
I don't... Well, there isn't a contract. I guess I'm confused, help me understand, what would, what would be an example of an absolute emergency? I mean, what type of turnaround time are you expecting, and what would constitute an emergency for the gate access, why the pool is attended?
Well, it's July the 4th, and there are several hundred people in the pool and more wanting to get in, and all of a sudden the gate doesn't work, and they can't get in without jumping over it, I would think that we'd like to have somebody out there fairly promptly...
Okay, so our pool is not always attended, that could be just something that I'm, that I'm missing.
Oh, yeah.
It's always attended.
Well, the comeback would be, then, why do we even need the system? If the, if the operation can function without it, then what are we needed for?
Well, it's only operating without it when, because you've got staff there, but they've got other tasks, they can't just be a gate attendant, they're, you know, so the gate attendant is only as an emergency, and, but I think we can, you know, require a 24-hour response.
Well, that's not very fast.
Okay, 12, what, I mean...
How about we go to them and ask them the open-ended question? Have we got a business manager there? Hey, how quickly could you get this done for us?
Okay, do you want to just... Okay, do you want to just maybe try to adopt the motion, contingent on a particular response time, so we'll be able to proceed with the project as long as they'll be able to make that commitment?
I'd love to. I'd like to get this behind us today. Could you ask Diane or someone to call them and ask them what's...
Sure.
But hurry back because Mr. Senior has some questions on it.
Just talking to the board, would ADT also be the one if we don't have the appropriate cameras there, which we really should, reliability? I think Tony might support that, too, in case of, you know, injury or that type of thing. Or in the evening, somebody jumping the fence? Would ADT be an applicable possible vendor?
As possible.
CCTV is mentioned in the forty-four-page document.
So the maybe a...
It's gonna take a, I would call it a survey to know how many, what kind of cameras, and whether they're gonna have infrared motion detectors on them if you're gonna get to everything you just mentioned.
I think that they could give that to April pretty quickly. Can I set that out to us?
I would actually build on that and say, if we go forward on this project today, we could ask ADT to come in and give us a presentation on the camera options we have available.
You had question three. April, you're here before.
Thank you, April. Good job on this. The numbers are a no-brainer, two-point-eight-year payback. It's obvious we don't lease it. And it's not that big a deal financially. I'm more concerned about the functionality and what's actually going... The modus operandi of how it's gonna work. I've just got a bunch of things I'll fire through. The response time, we've already dealt with that. The response time for a call-out. I'm not sure what... We need to ask them what they can offer, particularly on holiday weekends where they may not have staff.
Diane's trying to call Sharif right now.
Yeah. The other thing is, I think what's not being mentioned here is the cost of cards because cards are already out there, and to go with a competitor, you'd have to buy a whole whack of new cards. And that's a big advantage in staying with ADT because we can live with the cards that are out there.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah, I was gonna say, correct.
So the question now is, how much does a new card cost for every new customer, every new resident who wants a card? Have you got a cost out of them?
I do not, but I do know that we don't currently have a replacement card fee, which would also be something that we may want to consider at another point in time for a policy. Because the way that I understand it from staff is there is a lot of administration to the cards because their households want multiple cards, and I think our current policy is one card per household. So they get a lot of, you know, I lost my card, or someone else has the card, so they need to issue a new card, and then the staff has to go in and change the information. So they're constantly adjusting the data on the card to deactivate and activate new cards, whereas a replacement card fee may detour that a little bit.
It says here on this bunch of clarification email that five hundred... It says gateway personnel will be trained on the system. Considering that there are approximately five hundred entries that will have to be inputted, I estimate the process will take two days.
Right.
Five hundred entries, what do you mean by five hundred?
There's currently five hundred active cards.
Okay, so what you're gonna do is re-enter those cards, reactivate every card?
Right, right.
In other words, if you don't reactivate them, they won't work.
Correct. And what we have to do is, I believe, the Cliff Note version of how it was explained to me is that we'll be entering them into a spreadsheet of some sort, and we have to get it into the format so we can upload it into the new software.
Well, here's my request. If the board supports this, we need to be sure who's got those cards because they've been out for many, many, many years. And they're in the hands of... And I know some people who don't even live in Gateway have got cards. They've moved away.
Well, and I know Holly had made the comment that she works really hard at deactivating the cards to where she only has the active ones.
I understand. What I'm saying is, this is a great opportunity now, bringing a new system in, to make sure every card, somebody comes into the office perhaps here with a photo ID and the proof that they're Gateway resident, and then we activate their card.
Well, I believe that's being captured with our policy to have only one card per residence. I believe that's how we're controlling that, is that either way, there's a card per, for one house. So when a new resident moves into a home and the old resident takes that card away, the new resident comes along and wants access to the pool, she's deactivating the other one and reactivating one. So there's only one card per address.
Yeah, but the address, we have to verify that every card that's out there is a Gateway address.
Yeah, I'm sure that she can clear... She can clearly see that.
Because I think there are people using the pool who don't live in Gateway.
Well, I can definitely...
I think we should know that.
I can definitely talk to staff about that. But because we're locking it down to one card per address, I would... She wouldn't activate it if it wasn't a Gateway address.
It was an old address. I'm talking about people who have had cards for years who have moved away and have still got the card.
But if somebody moves into the same address, they're gonna deactivate the old card, right? When they do the new?
Not every house has a card for that pool. We don't have a card. I don't have a card. My property doesn't.
Could it work this way? How do you... When someone changes ownership of a house, they physically have to come in to register for their utility service. Is that true?
Mm-hmm.
I'm asking.
I'm sure.
They don't have to physically come in. They can do it over the phone.
Okay. But if they, if we... Because there are some utility vendors that do require it in person, i.e. Fort Myers. That way, when the person came in to sign up, it could also be a part and parcel of the fact of, and by the way, cordial greeting to you, et cetera, we wanted to issue you your new pool card, et cetera. And at that time, you have the name of the person who previously lived there. You could simply, if we had it on the database, you could simply go to that name, deactivate the card instantly at that time as you're activating the new card.
Sounds like a great idea to me.
Well, I don't know. Wouldn't that be basically four thousand pool cards versus five hundred?
What if we just had an expiration date that they're only active for a year?
I think they...
And it would be, you know, like A through G is January.
And what if you're the receptionist, which we will hereby call the director of reception? Because she'll want a double increase in her salary to visit all those people on an annual basis.
Well, we could go back through and re-verify all the cards. Send out a letter, say, you know, they're all gonna be deactivated. If you want it reactivated, please fill this out and return it.
All right, board members.
Yeah.
I've got a list of questions.
Let's go on. Wait, hold on just one second, please. Do you have an answer to the question about the...
I do.
Would...
Are you talking about...
I do.
Yes. The gates are, they're magnetic lock, and they're powered... The power is sustained in locked position when the power is on. If we lose power or anything like it, it's just a matter of removing one pin from that board. And he can come and do that, or he can direct the staff to do that. And if we lose internet activity, anything that's in that system remains there. It's not a problem. The only time when you lose internet, you wouldn't be able to add a new person. And if there was a real and dire emergency, he couldn't really come up with any situation. He said it would be twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
So that it would have to be a major disaster before he'd have to come physically to the pool? Is that what you're saying?
Because that pin removed from the panel allows people to come in, doesn't prevent anybody from entering once.
So in the event of a power failure, that gate unlocks?
I don't know if he gets it by lightning.
Well, the attendant would have to do it.
There's a pin they remove.
No, no. My question is, is at night, we have a huge thunderstorm, power goes out, et cetera.
No, it remains locked.
Continuing, does that gate fail-safe to unlocked or locked?
Locked.
Locked.
Okay.
And then, back to your policy issues, perhaps we can just direct staff to research on how to bring back to you how we're doing this, how we're controlling access to the pool, and then maybe at that time, we can come up with some suggestions and bring that back to you as a policy.
That's great. Now, let's listen to the rest of Mr. Senior's questions, and hopefully we can get this behind us.
Yes, Carl, I like your suggestion of using this opportunity to re-register everybody who has cards that are out there. I think annually might work, except particularly if we're gonna charge a user for you, which we're not. And, but...
Who's that?
Don't bring that up.
No. So we've got the costs under control. We've reduced the costs enormously by going to natural gas.
Thank you very much.
So I think that, I think the idea of taking this opportunity to have people re-register and show, at least, either sending an address where they live or come and show their photo ID. After all, you know, it should be a Gateway resident facility, not for people who live outside Gateway. The other thing I want to ask is, is the internet part of this, April? We've just signed up with high-speed Comcast as opposed to the Windstream thing, right, for the latest AV upgrades? So we've got high-speed Comcast coming in here. So the idea of internet connectivity to the Commons Pool would presumably be through a wireless connection to this high-speed Comcast that terminates here.
I think the Windstream is still at the pool.
Is there any thought gone into using high-speed Comcast that terminates here and having a transmitter receiver wireless router?
This goes back to the IT evaluation that we're trying to do right now. We're trying to look at all of our different IT providers and see how we can streamline that. But the way that I understand it is we have Comcast here, and we still have the Windstream at the pool.
The Windstream is very slow, and that's why I've got high-speed Comcast. Scott and I sat with the Comcast guy, and his name's on file. He gave us the name of a guy who Comcast worked with to provide wireless connectivity to things like the dog park and the pool. So we can use this high-speed Comcast rather than the slow-speed Windstream. It's worth checking into that.
Right, and that's part of our IT evaluation. The way that I do understand it is we do have a commitment under the Windstream agreement, I think through maybe...
June. It goes month-on-month after June.
Okay, and so that's kind of our timeline on the horizon, is trying to get some of these IT issues resolved so we can make a decision by then when we need to end that contract.
The last question is, has been covered. This is an ADT recommendation for this new device. I forget the serial number, model number, whatever it is. But it's worth staff checking a couple of clients who have actually installed that very model number to see what their experience is. It says in the reference, there's fifteen thousand installed or something like that. I'm just saying, let's contact a couple of them.
Okay.
That's your point as well.
So like a gate access? So I'm just trying to figure out how...
Ask ADT for a couple of clients that we can form.
Okay.
And the last point is CCTVs. Perhaps ADT will be willing to come back in to cover Bill's point and give us some idea of what CCTV cameras, options we have that we can add on to this project.
It'd be a new project, not this project. This is a standalone.
It could be, I don't know.
But I wanna hold this up for that.
No, no, I'm not suggesting we hold it up. We're saying we piggyback.
It's add-on.
It's an add-on.
Sure.
And it's...
It's also internet-related.
It talks about the possibility.
Absolutely. Plus, it should be accessible so that certain designated people have the capability at home with a laptop that they could sit there and check.
We need to be able to see the pool from a smartphone. That's what I'm saying. This is all connected with the internet connectivity and this wireless Comcast, high speed, and Windstream won't cut that. That's my question, thanks.
Thank you.
Now, can I just get clarification? We want to reach out and get, talk to some references for the model, the actual mechanism itself.
The model that they're recommending, let's check two clients who have put it in.
Okay, assuming that she can get two satisfactory recommendations, may I have a motion to approve this recommendation for the management?
I'll move.
Motion?
I'll say.
Second, I think, and with the proviso that it goes through and it satisfies you, you sign it, and it's done.
Okay, so we want two, two positive references?
Please.
I'm sorry.
And one last thing I'd like to comment on because with the setting, resetting the ownership of the card and making that verification, unless you put some kind of a mechanism in going forward, in three years, we'll be at the same place. We won't know if all of the cards out there are actually Gateway residents. So there should be some sort of a mechanism to, you know, have them expire on a rotating basis or something, but I don't know what would work best with this system or with staff. But that's a way that you'd make sure that all of the cards that are out there are...
Okay, I have it noted that we'll review the access policy, troubleshoot some ideas, and brainstorm, and bring something back to you.
I agree with you.
So you said you're bringing it back next meeting?
The policy?
Policy.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's...
Are you serious?
I'm dead serious. Hey, lead, follow, or...
I have several other items that we have on our list. Maybe we should prioritize it.
I would imagine that you could find somebody to designate that, too, that could make a few phone calls and come up with that because ultimately, you're not gonna be the one that's gonna be doing that, but I can easily see these two ladies here coming up with...
The motion, though, is not to bring the purchase back. The motion is that it's approved contingent upon two positive responses. So that won't come back. You're looking at a policy on how we're going to recertify access. Now, it's done at the dog park, initially, so I think we'll just extend it the same way.
And I wanted to also add in, you brought up a good thing. If this becomes a thing, and this is all kind of related with Rodden and everybody here with regard to this works thing, if people are gonna keep doing this stuff with needing new cards, et cetera, then we should throw in a fee, and there's no reason why we can't vote on that right now. I think that if you required a ten-dollar renewal fee, do you find that aberrant or what?
Well, first of all, we're gonna set a policy on a fee. We should look around and see what the going fee is for a card replacement. But before we set those rules, because we really need, staff needs clear direction on effective dates, and also, if we're going to levy such a fee to a resident, we really need to have a policy in place where we can go back to them and say, this is the policy that board has adopted. And without that documentation, it gives staff much heartburn to deal with the residents that are upset with such fees. So I'd rather present that in a policy.
It should be an agenda item, too, so residents can...
Then when? Because all these things tend to get pushed off, and they never reappear. That's the history here.
I promise you, I have a lot of things on my radar, and I will make sure that it gets back to you.
And you also agree that you will have them in by the book, not something that occurs two days before we have a meeting and suddenly, here's forty-four pages studied.
I promise I will have it to you in advance on the agenda.
There is a precedent in homeowners' associations like mine where these are transponder-based cards. If you lose a card, it's twenty-five bucks, for example. I don't know what Stony Brook is.
For automobile transponders, it's twenty-five, and if you need a replacement. And for the access card, it's five dollars.
What about Pelican? Do you have a situation there?
I don't know.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're getting off the subject.
Which is the subject?
No, it is not the subject. The subject is, are we going to approve the contract with ADP, of which we have a motion and a second?
That's already in your lap as far as working, so I think Margaret'd agree.
We haven't voted on it yet, sir.
Aye.
Oh, it's a... Four, zero. We have...
Thank you.
Now, can we debate whether it's relevant?
Just for clarification on direction to staff, what I heard, that instead of two weeks, I'm asking for thirty days.
Thirty weeks?
No, thirty days, that we're gonna come back with a policy and procedure on renewal and also a fee. Now, we're gonna have to go through rulemaking on that.
A public hearing at least, a public hearing.
Right, at least a public hearing.
That's correct.
So can you set a public hearing for thirty? Is thirty days enough?
Well, it's ten days is... We have to have a notice in paper. Thirty days is more than enough time.
Okay.
So first meeting in April, is this true?
If that's your motion, yes, we can meet that.
That's my motion.
So set a public hearing on rulemaking for... So, set a public hearing on rulemaking for the pool card or pool access policy and fees for card replacement.
It is administrative rulemaking.
Administrative rulemaking.
In addition to that, any updates on pool policy overall?
No, we're not going to talk about pool policy. We already did decide we're not going to talk about.
We're not talking. The staff is bringing this back to us, Bill. This is all being brought back to us by staff.
You're going to open a can of worms that you don't want.
I'd like to keep it at what you guys have already prioritized.
I'd like to ask one question. Does this need to include the dog park access card also?
Yeah, the policy should.
Okay, also to include the dog park.
Include the dog park, okay.
We will have that for a public, one public, or April 1 public hearing.
April Fool's Day.
Are you okay with that?
Excellent. April Fool's Day.
Is that the first, is it Thursday?
Excuse me, I'm trying to clarify the motion, but.
If, if staff has a problem with any part of the in-place policies, it would seem to me that this is the time to get that out of the way as well. April 7. So, all I'm saying, and they may have none.
We will, we will take that, we'll follow.
If staff has a problem, i.e., Holly says, hey, I've been waiting to change this particular policy or to update this policy, it would seem that this is the perfect time to do so if we're going to have to do this in a public venue.
Looking at it, administrative procedure. We'll incorporate all administrative procedures, nothing controversial like.
I'm sure that Bill will find out what they are and he'll decide.
We're not bringing back the whole subjective user fee, Bill.
We certainly are not.
No, so, nothing to be concerned about. We're talking about somebody losing their card and being charged 10 bucks. That's, I think it's perfectly.
Yeah, I would submit that if we're going to do a more detailed policy change as far as utilization of the facilities and all the rest, it may be a different process for adopting, but this is just a simple charge for, you know, administrative rulemaking for lost cards. It's relatively simple.
And if we can squeeze something else in there that would make Holly happy, we'll do it.
Then, how about this? Not as part of it, that by the next meeting, you simply have Holly tell us whether or not there are policies that need to be changed. All that amounts to a phone call by you to Holly.
I'm a little confused because I'm confused about the public hearing and the rulemaking for the fee. Are we not talking about reviewing the policy as a whole within 30 days?
Any, any policy changes as a whole?
Okay, I'm, I am confident that we should review our policy and bring it back to you for adoption.
With, with Holly's input.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Please stand by to standby, folks. Me in April. So, you're saying that by the first meeting in April, you're confident that you could do that? I don't need anyone else's input.
For the polit, for the policy review.
Yeah.
That's what Cal committed me to.
Was this policy adoption or just policy review and discussion?
No, adoption.
Oh, we're now sitting here.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Tony, if I understand, the only reason for a public hearing is if there's going to be a proposed charge for a lost card. Is that the only reason?
Any kind of rule.
There's two kinds of hearings. One is the more complicated one, the longer rulemaking process, such that we're doing for pre-qualification. We have the rules of procedure, we have to have the advanced notice, notice of rulemaking. When we're talking about rates, fees, and charges, it's a shorter timeframe for that administrative rulemaking. And so, if we're talking about the fee for the lost card, we can use the administrative rulemaking, the shorter process for that, for the fees.
If we did both of them simultaneously, how many, how many days do we need?
We might need the longer process for the other one.
That's, that's, no, that's out of order. No, no, no. You're going to.
We'll see how much we can squeeze in, though.
We, we can meet your objective.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment just to, just to make you aware of some, some other issues that are going on because we're talking, now we're talking about the level of a, of a public hearing and, and fees. Can I propose that perhaps for now, we can, we can review our policy and bring the policy back to the board for adoption, leaving out the fee for now? Because what I would like to do and what staff is struggling with is I would like to get one codified document of the district's fees and have that readdressed as a whole. Instead of taking one by one little fee at a time, a replacement card fee to you at the level of a public hearing, let us evaluate the fee structure as a whole and bring that back to you so we can review the policy, so we'll know what we're doing with the pools. Let's leave the little card replacement fee out for now and address a codified fee schedule as a whole.
By when?
That's, that's one year from now because that's, that's how, how undesegregated all of our fees are right now. We've got a huge utility project going on right now. We've got new staff. We would like to evaluate all our fees and bring it back to you as a whole. And one year may be an exaggeration, but I definitely, I cannot give, I, I, I just don't have my feet wet enough and my fingers in everything deep enough to, to be able to make that commitment.
With what's the gentleman's name that does the fee study?
Mike Burton.
Exactly. Do we still have that contract?
Yep.
Why aren't we having Mike come back?
Mike's more on.
You sure?
April is, as mentioned, we're setting up a meeting to start discussion with, with all affected parties. And not to disagree with you, let's get this little thing done, out of the way, and it'll just roll into, because we're, we're looking at user fees. It's just a big, and it could take upwards to a year, and I don't want to see this wait for a year. Let's, let's just get this knocked off, and it is a cost for a public hearing, but it's the, what the task she's talking about is a bigger elephant to slew than this little bitty mouse.
Okay. Putting words in your mouth, you're going to have April by April, bring us in any changes to the pool rules that she and the staff find necessary.
Policy.
Policy, excuse me.
Administrative policy.
Administrative policies.
Are you good with that?
But what are we going to do about them? Let's say she comes and says that there's things that need to be changed.
Well, they're just administrative policies. We can change them on the spot.
Right.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Mr. Newbauer made the motion?
And, and the senior said, and we also already have one eye, and I'm two, and I'm three, and.
And we have a discussion before we vote?
We've already had a discussion for the last 20 minutes.
Robert's rules. I just wanted to say that if we had, so if we had this comeback from policy on April the 1st, and part of that suggestion was that we introduce a lost card fee, how do we proceed forward from there?
That would be part of that.
Okay, but we can't adopt that until the public hearing.
Right, okay, which will be April 7.
Thank you.
Yeah, and possibly by that, before that time between now and the April 7 meeting, March 17, I guess, is the next meeting, there may be a number that is proposed for discussion. Because we have to advertise what the number's going to be.
Okay, we've got four zero on that.
We're all dancing around the lady that's sitting there or standing there, looking like she's about to be shot.
If we could put a rough draft of some of the key points we're going to put together, we'll have it on the 17th, if not, we'll just get it to you the week before the meeting. We'll have it in the meeting book.
It has to be, and the rates have to be in the notice of public hearing.
I'm going to follow the directions that I receive.
Yep, I got it covered.
Right.
Thank you.
So, we're having a public hearing for the, for the pool, the card replacement fee.
If.
No, wait, 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 no.
No, on April the 1st, I understand that you're going to come to us with suggested policy changes, and that time, it may or may not include a lost card fee.
Okay, I, I thought Cal was under the impression we were going to be having a public hearing on the first meeting in April, the 7.
The April 7th, yes. That's what the motion's for.
No, the motion is not for that.
No, I agree with Bill. We didn't. The motion is to have the staff come back on April the 1st with suggested policy changes.
April 1st is a Friday, so April 7th is the first meeting.
April 7.
Correct.
April 4.
And if there is, if there is a lost card fee proposed by staff, we'll deal with it then.
We'll deal with it later. That's right.
Okay, so no public hearing, it's just to bring something back by April 7.
Are you okay?
Yep.
Thank you all very much. That has just been such a wonderful discussion.
Thank you.
We're going to go on to the on-call schedule policy, which is now in front of you.
And this is not, at the last meeting, the board had approved the on-call policy. We didn't have something in place.
Concept.
Concept. So, this is still under legal review and, you know, we'll send it out electronically for your review once Tony's approved it, but it still centers around the basic concept that was approved at the last meeting. The, that's effective with the, the last pay period when this was adopted, so I think it's March 9 or February 9?
8.
10? Okay.
On page 1, take a look at the last paragraph.
Are you, time and a half?
Time and a half will be paid for a minimum of a one-hour F.
Which is your current policy?
One-hour F?
I'm sorry, we've already caught that typo. It's if, it's if, I'm sorry.
I took that personally.
Sorry. Diane's eagle, I caught that.
It's kind of a hanging F.
All right. Members, this is, this is for you to take home for you.
I already have taken home, I already.
Evening reading.
Absolutely.
If we, if the attorney has difficulty with it?
I will, what I will do, I'll have my comments to Cal by no later than Monday to Cal.
All right.
And you'll have a copy of it Tuesday, and then it's just in effect.
All right, so can I pass this back to?
Cal, just let me reiterate my one concern that I mentioned two weeks ago, and I want to make sure this is echoed in the final document, and that is that we, there's only one employee at a time can take advantage of this. In other words, I think it was a figure of 140 bucks a week. We didn't, we shouldn't be in a position where we have two employees taking advantage, so it's going to cost us 280 dollars.
Correct.
As long as that's embodied. That was my one concern.
It's in there.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We're going to look at financials for low pressure issue. April, do you want to quickly take us through what happened and what the staff found and did, and what it cost, please?
Are we on 5C?
Yes.
I tried to create for you a Cliff Notes version based on the instructions, and I have nothing in my. Basically, I got the information from the engineer side, and we looked at time sheets for, for our, our staff time, and we spent approximately $2,000 on engineering fees and $2,000 on the data logger equipment that we had to purchase, which is owned by the district. The gateway staff time was $675, and there were some miscellaneous parts. I did not get involved with looking and understanding what that was because I had, I'm backpedaling with a lot of this stuff and trying to catch up, and so, we had a total of $5,165 to address the low-pressure issues on Walden Run.
Thank you. Questions for April?
So, the summary version is really, we don't have problems.
And Danny is here, if we want to get into the details because they provided the, the actual, the charts, and I believe that the pressures were all normal, correct? Yes.
So, in other words, essentially, we have, this isn't the first time that we've had this issue, and each time, it is approximately a cost of $5,000, et cetera.
Well, I don't, I don't have any history, but.
You don't know the history, but we do. And so, this.
He's right.
Thing keeps cropping up, and just so that we express that, A, that we've had our staff multiple times look into this, we've spent a lot of money and a lot of time, there hasn't been any substantiation of actual defects. So, our service and the quality of our services and the quality of our staff is not at question here whatsoever. The question will be the next time around, are we willing to spend these kinds of monies for these kinds of things? That's my summary.
Please, excuse me, I'm going to, I want to ask Margaret first and then.
Go ahead.
Well, I had a question on here in that on page 38, there's action requested. Is that?
Yes.
Are we no longer wanting to do that? And please, what is a permanent blow-off assembly that they're asking to install? What, what would be the purpose of that?
Danny, would you like to expand on what the, what this recommendation was from, from your office? I believe it's the.
In fact, it's already, yeah, it's already been installed. The, that's an end-of-the-line system, so the recommendation was to put a blow-off on there because you have some existing issues there. In fact, I think there was a blow-off there already. So, it's just, you know, it's just replacing what was there, what was there before, was previously in the ground. But this is, it's a device that's necessary, and it's our recommendation that it stay there. So, I mean, residents have asked, the beast has been unleashed, and now, now they don't like the, the end of the product, unfortunately, so, but that's what it is. It's, it's a blow-off because of where it's, where it's located.
Is it to blow off higher pressure?
Yeah, it's, yeah, to, to, to release pressure if there is air that gets in the system, yes.
Correct.
Sorry.
Please stay at the podium, Danny. I was under the impression that no low-pressure issue was found as a result of, of any of our lines. Am I correct or not correct about that?
Correct. In fact, the pressures in that area were, were high. They were, I think they averaged around 72 PSI, so it's, it's completely adequate. And in fact, one of the residents, when pressures were viewed at, directly at her home, this was the, this was the PhD, pressures exceeded 100 PSI, so we notified her that she, she needs to consider, you know, contacting a plumber because she's, you know, she could have issues internally with her plumbing. That's not caused by your system. You can't create pressure, but it's believed that, you know, that sort of pressure can be created from excess heat in the, in your.
Hot water tank.
Hot water tank. So, it suggested that she contact a plumber to see because it seems like there's a, an issue there with, with the heat building up pressure in her system from what she's creating.
Speaking for myself, and I hope the rest of the board, I want our residents to know that we provide excellent service, okay? And I don't want anything that I'm going to say now to infer anything to the contrary. But this is an awful lot of money to spend on one or two houses and a, and a lot of our folks' time, et cetera, et cetera. Did, were the decisions that were made at the time when this request was made, are they decisions that, that you as a, as a professional would think were correct, or do you think that the new management shouldn't have any other considerations for it if a call like this is made in the future?
I, I think in this particular case, this was the third or fourth time that it had been investigated. To this degree, this is the first time that it had been investigated this, this thoroughly. And I'm going to back up for a second and say that part of the, the $5,000 with the equipment that was purchased were the loggers, the data loggers that allowed for that extensive of, of an analysis to be done. So, essentially, these loggers were placed in the system, and they were monitored at multiple locations in the, in the residential area, and that allowed us to collect the data to know continually, because it continually would take a pressure reading every, I think, five minutes. So, it would tell you if you had a problem. So, to the degree that this was done, I, I support what was done. I think it was a good decision because past efforts didn't, didn't go to this degree. I think, personally, I think you can put this to bed. If, I think that the likelihood that you'll have other areas that have, or come to you with the same sort of effort aren't going to be frequent, so you have the equipment now, that I think to go to another location, install those, and, and go through this process, you're not going to be looking at that $5,000 effort, but I think the likelihood that you're going to have that is, is probably going to be a lot, you know, a lot less, so I would just take it as it comes. In this particular case, multiple residents were complaining, so there was a belief that there was a problem there. So I think, I think ignoring the problem would not have been good due diligence, so I think you did, I think, I think the board and staff acted, acted correctly and proactively.
I'm delighted to hear that. Sherry, please.
My only comment at this point is the fact of, again, I, I come back to my thing on communication. I've reck, I, I would strongly recommend, but since that type of between-people communication that isn't accurate, as we've proven, is still there, unless we communicated with every one of the residents that are there what actually happened, our findings and the assurance of the quality of the product, the services that we deliver, and the fact that we're there, we're proud of the, the quality of what we do.
Blessed is the man who tooteth his own horn, and I agree with you about that. You thinking about all of Walden Run pressure?
I, it's, it's, you know, the, the work product has been completed, so it's a fairly simple task to take what Tyler has put together and, and prepare a document that can either be handed out or put in, you know, in those individual bills, or mailed to those homeowners on that road, to let them know that there was a perceived problem, and here's what took place. I mean, that's a fairly simple thing to do.
And another, there must be a property manager for Walden Run, correct?
We would think.
Therefore, if we send that information to the property manager and ask them to disseminate it to their folk, their constituents, it's expeditious for us, and it's good for them as well.
Danny, would you help write up something that could be fed to them, please?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to ask a question about the numbers. April, on page forty. I'm looking at the actual hard cost of, of performing this, is really not $5,165 in new cash, because the two data loggers were already purchased months ago, right?
No.
Well, are they different, the ones that we used before?
These are, these were, these were new data loggers.
Why couldn't we use the ones that we used before?
As I understand, the data loggers that were purchased before, they had, they had issues with, so, you know, in Yvonne's absence to, to do this, they had issues with, when Yvonne purchased those previously, and reconciling with the vendor, we're not sure whatever took place. So you may have loggers there, but, you know, staff looked for loggers that were usable, and they couldn't find them, so these loggers were, were purchased specifically for that, so they can be used moving forward.
Okay. So the, so, by the way, I didn't realize the old ones we bought, we had issues with. Have we made attempts to get a refund, then, or what?
I think once, you know, when Yvonne is at a place where we can communicate with, with him, I think we can find that out, and I think he's still in Puerto Rico, so-
Exactly.
I think we can find that out.
Thank you. Carl, I would suggest you put that on the list, we can't, but my question is this. Okay, so, so we bought two new pieces of equipment, so in, in situations like this, we have the equipment, this isn't incremental cost every time.
Right.
But, but the gateway staff cost is $675, presumably that's just allocated hourly costs. It's not, is that what that is?
It does not include retire, retirement.
Benefits.
No, it's just an allocation, it's not, it's not new cash, right. So the only real cash is $4.90 for parts, and what are they?
I can't remember what the parts were just-
Is that every time we do this?
No, I, I believe that was, that was associated with, I think that's a one-time.
Okay, so the only real cost is $2,000 engineering fees, is that Tetra Tech?
That was, that was Tetra Tech.
And how many hours is that?
I, I don't, Tyler actually accounted for it, let's say twelve.
Is it really, do we really need twelve hours of Tetra Tech's time to do this?
I, I will say, moving forward, absolutely not. I think you had a unique situation here, where you had some very involved community members, but I, you know, no, I, I think in the future, honestly, I think this is something that staff can handle moving forward.
There's my point. So the incremental cost to us will be very negligible to do this response again. Thank you.
I'd like a motion to accept the summary as requested by the management. Motion by Gary.
I'll second.
Second, on favor, say aye. Aye, four zero, thank you very much.
Just as a sidebar, I think that quickly, if somebody speaks to Terry Handler, he could probably get, answer all the questions.
See, talk with Terry.
If somebody talks to Terry, I think he'll answer all the questions, because he was directly involved.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Item five D is award of landscape irrigation improvements, the median islands on Gateway Boulevard. For some reason, I'm not getting to where I need to get to.
Yeah, it's not anything-
I don't have anything here, do I?
The bids came, right, it came separate, the bids were received, did you put the patent code?
Actually, that's something that the book should be corrected, five D should actually be pushed into five C.
Right, right, but, uh-
Yeah, mine is that way, too.
Yeah.
I moved it. And I did not make hard, hard copies, that's not fault, learning how we're getting this stuff through them.
Basically, you had three bids. Okay. And the specifications were drawn up by insight, I don't, that's just one set, but, and bids were received, these are in the median Gateway Boulevard, where the, the palms had been, you know, relocated, and so you've got three bids based on the same specifications, Mainscape, O'Donnell, and Estate, and Mainscape was the low bidder. Mainscape is in the audience, if you have any questions of their bid, but seeing that you're, they're your landscape maintenance company also, it probably makes sense that the, they get the low bid, that the low bid be awarded to them.
Give us the dollar amount, please, Cal.
Ninety-seven thousand, one twenty-four. O'Donnell was one forty, eight forty-nine, and Estate was one eighty, four seventy-eight.
Okay, board members-
Come on.
Well, I haven't stopped.
Could we take a five-minute?
No.
Absolutely, could we? We're going to-
Board's going to stand and recess for five or ten minutes.
Uh, she's making copies of the packet. Oh, a packet, okay. Does, can she do eleven by seventeen?
She should give it to you.
I guess, I, I don't know, not all copyers can.
Hello, how are you?
You got a turn, I guess.
Three months of data log on the roof for this.
I've done the reputable roofing contractors backed up today.
This guy's going to get a bit of a friend going?
Exactly, well, it's, it's, it's easy to get a cheap roofing company, but it's not easy to get a good one. We're down to the shortlist of three now.
Oh, yeah, I got my thing.
And then the full page comes after that. Thank you for asking.
I did want to ask you, because you were talking about the gutters, and I know you're on the lake.
I'm on a lake, that's good enough. I still call it lake.
The way mine was constructed in Devonshire, the, but there are gutters, and the gutters come down, and they all go underground, up to the-
That's what I do, I dug my own trench.
Well, mine's not working any proper anymore, and the, the supposition is that what they used was a plastic, a plastic-
That's what I use, from Home Depot.
Yeah, which collapsed.
With no holes in it, it's got to be solid, and it collapsed.
Well, that's what they're, they, that's what they're telling is probably the crust.
How do you know? Is it just not, there's no water coming out the other end of the bubble box, you mean?
Well, we don't have, that's, that's my-
Where does it go to?
It goes out of pipe, right out to the, to the pond.
Yes.
But now we have all kinds of erosion, and it grows right about where the-
Not just in my, my spots, but all along that bank.
Well, here's, here's what I'm hearing you say. Okay, so here's, here's your house, here's the lake, and the gutter comes down.
Me, too, I agree.
That's regular Home Depot, big black plastic pipe, and then at the end of that pipe, before the, before the lake, there's my lawn above it, right? Then you have a ninety-degree, ninety-degree plastic bend, you can find, a solid plastic-
It's not there.
That's what's not there, but a ninety-degree plastic pipe, and then, and then that connects into a bubble box, that's, that's almost at the, almost at the surface of your lawn, and that's, and that's ten feet from the palm, or something like that.
I don't think we have, probably every fifteen feet back at my house, two.
You need a DIY guy to come and find the pipe and put that in, it wouldn't cost you a lot.
Right, but what I'm told is that whatever this was, it's collapsed.
Then you need a DIY guy to dig the trench and find the breaks.
Exactly.
Then I went back to register for Christmas.
Because we get so much erosion there. This is the, this is the best solution?
Yes, in my opinion, but I'm not in it, Danny's a good guy, but I, it works to me.
Do you remember the Cleveland days of-
Is it possible, is it allowed, for me to just have a, I mean, a pipe that opens out to the grass and just-
Yes, the black guy, every time I fly in for my mother's birthday, and I get on the plane and go.
Here's why I did it, because I've got such a huge amount of water piling up my roof in many seasons, it was just coming out here and forming a slot.
That's what's happening now.
It was flooding, so I just took, instead of taking it away, and a lot of people just take it away ten feet, to spread it into their lawn.
Right.
I took it down here and dug a long trench and put a bubble box in.
Well, that's something we know, yeah, like our hotels, the major dome, they built my place, and so he says, this probably did collapse, but they didn't put a bubble in.
Well, you need, find it, find, you don't need a highly skilled guy to dig, to dig down and find it.
Yeah, it's like his contractor in labor.
Yeah, he can do it, but it'll cost you, I don't know, two or three hundred bucks, probably, most. To, to dig down, find that pipe, put it in, put an L-shaped bubble box, or to take it somewhere else.
My other question, friendly.
I read that, yeah, in the summer. Yeah, I read that, I haven't-
Now, there's a bigger cost, you're talking about under concrete, under your driveway, under your lawn.
No, 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 it's just under the lawn.
There's a big, that's bigger.
Yes, the buffer can be put right there.
I would, I would suggest you start with the back and watch what he does, see how it works before you tackle, before you tackle the front.
Thank you.
Okay, pleasure, pleasure. Do it. Every, I think everybody, everybody should be offered the opportunity to take advantage of a bulk deal, if we can do a bulk deal as a district.
I was hoping if I just had to specifically ask for our-
Sure. My point to Carl is, let's get a bulk deal from somebody and offer it to everybody, but let's fo, but let's focus on those who have just had money spent on their palms, because we don't want those to go south, do we?
No.
But if you want to take advantage of the same bulk deal, I think you should.
Yes, so, it will go to our homeowners association, or to our management.
I think we should disseminate that, my opinion is, we should get it, get Carl to put together a proposal, a marketing package, and put it out through all the HOAs, and let the HOAs promote it.
Yes, okay, that was my question, because I was just going to ask, could I, let's take advantage of it if it was-
Of course, I'm hoping it's something you could take advantage of, it's, you know, we ought to have the power to negotiate a better deal than you can.
Oh, yeah, I mean, because, you know, it's like-
You know what it's like, it's like mailboxes, if you go and buy your own mailbox, it'll cost you four hundred bucks, if the HOA makes a bulk deal, you get it for two hundred.
Yes, yes. I always say, that was my question, thank you.
Okay.
Did you get a picture of the designer, whatever he was on there? So on the website, I haven't seen it, anyway, so if they've seen it, so if they've seen it, then they're going to stream it with the business force. I don't think so.
Because, you know, it's already that far, so what plans are probably-
He's correct.
You've already, you've already, sometimes, now that there's a lot of-
Yeah, that's, if you want, yeah, the other, you know, when I had more, or following the same, how short they are, Jennifer, yeah. But it is, we have, 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 we can't decide now what flowers are going to go. No, we don't yet, we're, she got hold of the count, we got the model, we got the label, we're in the process of labeling, and we got, I think they told us that twenty-
I'm, I'm sorry, Margaret, I didn't realize that you guys hadn't already seen these plants.
They probably have, I can, so I wanted to make myself a copy.
We got one, we got one.
I wanted to make sure it can change, I wanted to make sure I had changed, since this was like the last vine.
Should I go make a few more copies? Thanks.
I think it's all right.
This is too, this is, I continue to do the story.
Which, which was the one, was it, one of these, the one that April passed around? When you made a copy of one, and you made one, did you make one or two?
I made two.
It was Kim's birthday yesterday, and I forgot. My wife told me that before, don't forget to call, my days started off kind of nutty, so guess what I forgot to do? Did I get those texts from Colin?
All right.
Quick call. Yeah.
If you don't end up wanting to keep that, I will take it, because I can get it from a call.
Ladies and gentlemen, the board is back in session, please govern yourself accordingly, is the video and audio on, Mr. Manager?
We just started.
Thank you very much. The item on the agenda is award of the landscape and irrigation improvements for Gateway Boulevard, where the palm trees were removed, and April talked to us a few minutes ago about the amount of the three bids, Mainscape, O'Donnell, and Estate landscaping, and Kathleen Flaherty, representing the Landscape Advisory Committee, I believe, is here, and would you like to come to the podium and tell us what's what?
Hi, Kathy Flaherty, 12566 Stony Brook, yes, stony, stone, ivory stone loop, and I'm here representing the Landscaping Committee, because JB, from the chair, asked me to be here, so that's why I'm here.
The board has-
I saw that, yeah, I don't read very well, I never.
Kathleen, the board has a recommendation in front of it this evening, to award a contract in the amount of $97,000 to Mainscape, to do these improvements. Do you have any comment that you're bringing to us from the Landscape Advisory Committee?
The Landscape Advisory Committee did not meet to discuss those.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
All right. Do you have anything to help us with tonight?
Only my personal opinion, that's not from the Landscaping Committee. We were supposed to meet yesterday, but April sent us a notice, because I guess that she was going to make the recommendation for the lower one, so we did not meet to look at them.
I see. This, do any board members have any comments for today? May I, may I invite Kathleen to have her, take her seat?
No, I'd like to talk to Kathleen, while she's standing there.
Would you please stay at the podium?
Sure.
Maybe go to Rod first, because he wants to talk to Kathleen, please, Rod.
Hi, Kathleen.
Hello.
Just to, just to clarify, your committee did approve, although you didn't recommend the figures, you did approve Ensite.
Yes.
That's important, okay? You improved Ensite, now, if you could, I think it would help everybody in this room, if you, like, I've got it up here, if you could get GatewayDistrict.org on, on to show the pictures of what we're voting on here, and this is what the Landscape Advisory Committee approved.
Mm-hmm.
That's important to get that straight.
Uh, she would have to download it to a phone drive.
No, no, it's, it's just go online.
Oh, okay.
Just go online, go to the, go to Chrome, go to Chrome or Explorer and go online.
Uh, no, you do it on this one.
I think it's important that we're all looking at what we're approving here.
Okay, yeah, I think. No, or not, I don't see a explorer, or any type of-
We'll come to the numbers here.
Representative from Mainscape, would you please come to the podium? Yeah. Hi, could you give us your name, please?
I'm Nancy Clark. I'm the Landscape Enhancement Manager for Mainscape.
Thank you. I have questions for you.
Hi, Nancy. Hi. I know you did some renderings yourself.
Yes.
But the renderings we're looking at on the big screen there, EnSite's rendering, correct?
You know, I have to be perfectly honest, those don't look like what's on the plan.
Because this is what the ninety-seven thousand dollar quote is based on. And I want to make sure that that's what you're going, that's what you're going to deliver if we approve it.
That is different.
That is different. This is not what we're planning. This is not what's on the plan.
What's the date on that, on the corner? Be gone.
Now, I'm confused.
Oh, I can't read the date, sorry. It's just too blurred.
So, so what is.
But that is not the plan. We're not planting oleanders.
So who decided that?
Excuse me?
Who decided not to put oleanders in, for example?
Oh, I get, well, there's some annuals in there. There are two, there are palms, there are thrynax palms, there are Alexander palms.
September seventeenth, two thousand fifteen.
Perennial peanut.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand how we arrived at the ninety-seven thousand dollar figure, based upon the specification that was sent out.
From the specifi, from the specifications that were distributed to us about two weeks ago.
And does that not include this particular EnSite drawing?
No. That is not part of.
Now, I don't understand how, how we've moved from this, then, to what we're supposed to approve today.
And Mr. Senior, for the record, just that the date is nine seventeen fifteen on the EnSite plan that's up on the screen that's on the district website.
Okay, so.
And this EnSite plan is dated February twelfth, two thousand sixteen. And it is different.
Okay, so.
That is the one we are, we all based our quotes on.
So what happened in between this picture and that? Who made the changes? Was that EnSite or who did?
I believe it was the committee that did that.
The Landscape Advisory Committee?
Yes, because I do know originally when these plans came out, we were very concerned about the size of the plant material, that it was going to require excessive amount of maintenance. And that was one of the reasons we were changing this plan, was to decrease the maintenance because of the safety issues out there on the Boulevard. And with the, both the oleander and the silver buttonwood, they can both get very wide. That is a, I believe, a six-foot wide median at the most. And those buttonwoods and oleanders can easily reach eight to ten feet. So then we're still in a really serious situation as far as maintenance. And that's, I do believe that's why they went back to EnSite and had it changed.
So EnSite approved the change, though? That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
Because their names on this thing, and I don't want to just approve this ninety-seven thousand if EnSite.
It's on this one.
It's on there.
Right.
And the, the other bids, April, the hundred and forty and hundred and eighty, they're based on the same spec, are they?
Yeah, yes. I, I think what might have happened is when they made the changes, we, we incidentally did not get the revised plan updated on the website.
Okay, that clarifies that, thank you.
But, but all, but the plans went out by invitation only to, to a list of bidders. So they got, so everything was bid on the appropriate plans.
Of this ninety-seven thousand, presumably some is for landscaping, some is for irrigation.
Yes, sir.
What's the split?
Uh.
Roughly?
So, about thirteen thousand of irrigation?
Thirteen and eighty, thirteen and eighty-six.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's about right.
I've got no more questions right now. Or I may have when I hear my colleagues speak.
Gary? I'll hold for a minute. Margaret, you were the one that pointed this out to me initially, that this is not what we originally saw. Can you help me, help me get to where I'll need to get to, which I don't even know what it is?
Well, and, and I remember the Landscaping Committee having some concerns about the plants that were originally going to be placed in this area.
That is correct.
And there was some talk that there was going to be some changes, but this was the first time I had seen what those changes were going to be. And that was why I really, in particular, wanted to take a look at these documents and see what the changes were going to be. In looking at these, I don't have any objections. They look as though the things that were decided upon will actually issue saying fit in these areas better, probably require less maintenance. Some of the plants are the same. I mean, you stayed with the Alexander palms.
Right, we still have the Alexander's. And then they, I think they changed out the oleanders and the silver buttonwood with the thrynax radiatus. Which again, are going to be much safer on the Boulevard.
The Florida thatch palm is that.
Yes.
I don't know the science to it, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's Florida thatch.
Okay.
How much color are we going to have in this latest spec, in your opinion?
The majority of your color is going to come from the dwarfexoris, which are going in a straight-line base under some of the palm trees. I don't remember if they were the Alexander's or the thrynax. And then you're going to have perennial peanut, which is going, you have a lot of perennial peanut, almost sixty-four hundred. And those have a real pretty, it's a ground cover, they're out on Daniels, they're everywhere. They have a real pretty little yellow flower almost all year long. Very, very low maintenance, easy to maintain. And then again, they, on almost every bullnose, they have annuals. So you're going to have a big flush of color there.
Gary? Still struggling with why didn't we have, you know, this is a nice color visual. What Margaret has, not, you know, any fault to Margaret, is just some black and white thing. It just doesn't do a whole heck of a lot for you.
I copied it from Cal just now, tonight.
How hard is it to create this? Yes, ma'am?
Can I, can I comment? I, I think part of the issue that we're having here, if I understand it correctly, because I got, you know, I jumped into this process, learned a little bit about it the week that Scott and I doubled up, and, and I was with Scott his last week. And I jumped into the process with the committee. And all's I knew is that these proposals were coming to me on February twenty-ninth, so I immediately had to get a schedule. I worked with Tyler. And we set, we had a schedule set. So I jumped in and advised the committee that we needed to meet, because I thought we were going to have to rank these, these proposals, not realizing what had been done before me. And that the plan had already been set, there's nothing to really discuss, other than the lowest bid. So unfortunately, and I apologize, that's what happened to that meeting, is I realized that there was nothing, there was nothing actually to rank. And I believe what has transpired with this whole project, because it's part of the Road Rehab Project, and that we were kind of caught at the, behind the eight ball as far as having the palm trees removed, that then we realized we had to have this landscaping job. So everything is on a huge time constraint in order to stay on the schedule with the Road Rehab Project, which is why you got it the way that you did, and I apologize for that. And I kind of thought that you had already had the plans. Obviously, these plans were brought before you, but I think what had happened is they made some adjustments at the committee. We had new plans. And inadvertently, I believe this transpired the week, the last, Scott's last week, and we didn't get them posted to the website, trying to get everything rolling and in progress to stay on top of things. And unfortunately, that one slipped. So I believe that's probably another reason of why we don't have this type of layout in the revision to actually demonstrate that for you, because we're trying to, to get everything done in the ninth, ninth hour here.
Could I ask, how, the gentleman in the back, I can't catch your name, but can you come on up for a sec, please?
May I sit down? Well, it's just getting a little crowded here.
If I was in your shoes, I'd, I'd dump it in his lap, especially if I'm going to ask.
Zane, Zane Stoneman.
Your name, I would.
Zane Stoneman.
He looks like he's got broad shoulders, so be prepared.
All right.
How did you calculate the cost for the irrigation?
Bid specs. They were specified in there. They told me what we needed to bid, and we bid it per the specifications of the plan.
Could you educate just a poor boy like me? How do you, you calculate it by the running foot, by the?
Um, we'll calculate it multiple different ways, but what we do is take parts, labor, material, put it all in together, and come up with a, come up with a price.
All right, so it's, how many feet would you say this, this is?
Um. It's on the plan. I mean, it's the, the drip, the drip footage is on the plan. I've got, um, six thousand three hundred and sixty-three feet drip height. We've got five drip filter kits, fifteen drip flush valves, and a hundred and fourteen bubblers are the main components of the, of the thing, along with filters, filtration systems for the, for each valve. There's five valves associated with these islands.
And how many plants?
There you go.
Okay, now, thank you.
Sixty-four hundred. So you're a tactic here or a tag team?
Well, we have approximately six, well, we have six thousand three hundred and ninety-nine perennial peanut. We have close to four hundred horizontal cocoa plum, almost three hundred dwarf red exora, twenty-nine thrynax palms, the Florida thatch, nineteen Alexander palms. And I will be honest, I don't remember the number of annuals.
Four, uh, one thousand four fifty-seven.
Right. So ballpark, that's where we are.
So in other words, in a year, we're going to be replacing one thousand four hundred and fifty-seven annuals?
Yes. No, actually, you will be doing that probably several times a year. Freddie, we do four times in Gateway? Three times. We have three rotations on Gateway Boulevard.
Is there a reason why, again, bear with me now, why we couldn't do some more perennials to do something for the long run rather than the non-cost-effective annuals?
I do know, right. I do know that in the areas where you have traffic, where they're going to be turning, you do have a limit on the height. And that may be why these bullnoses, they've put in the annuals, because they will stay low, because you do need to have your, your sight lines have to be low. I forget how far back it is, but it's all in the regulations. And with this going to be turned over to the county, you know, we have to follow by those regulations.
Aren't there low perennials, though?
There's not that many that are going to stay colorful. That's why we use the perennial peanuts so much, because it does have the nice yellow flowers. And it'll only get about this high. You know, it stays very low. You mow it two or three times a year, and that's it. But as far as keeping something very low for your line of sight, coming out of Stony Brook, out of the condominiums, that's all very important, that they have to be maintained very low there. And I believe it's.
So Margaret, you going to, the peanut stuff, instead of annuals?
Well, the, the issue is, remember, Gary, that the annuals are planted on all of the, like, bullnoses, all the way up and down Gateway Boulevard.
Understand.
So, I mean, it's to keep it all uniform, of course, I feel like it should be the same. It's just a continuation on the Boulevard you'll drive down.
Understand, but we've got to be somewhat cost-effective as well. And if we do it here, then the next time that you went to replace the annuals, which are based upon what the young lady just said, every, every three to four months, then the next time around, couldn't you replace them with yellow peanut?
I think there's another, another piece to this, and that is what we've got, land architects are going to come up with for the master plan.
Right.
That's something, that's the next, that's the next shoe that's going to drop. And that, that will determine, that will determine how we're going to raise the bar throughout the community.
Exactly, exactly. And I don't know if EnSite is going to be the architect on that or who is.
No, I, I don't think.
You know, so, yes, things could very well change with a new landscape architect coming into the picture, very easily.
I do have a question. Margaret, did you finish?
I was just going to say, to clarify for Gary, the annuals every three months are replaced all the way up and down Gateway Boulevard. It's just, just a section.
Um, Al, Cal, Cal, I think you and I should have a discussion on this. We're on contract with Mainscape to the tune of eight hundred thousand bucks a year. I don't know the number, top of my head, it's not far off of that. But, but because of all of what's gone on with the royal palms and et cetera, there hasn't been any maintenance requirement for that section of Gateway Boulevard now for six months.
Oh, we've.
To the extent that you would have done had we kept things in place.
I think, the only thing that was removed were the royals, so we've still been maintaining the turf.
A lot of residents, and it's not your fault.
Right.
A lot of residents have complained, certainly to me as a supervisor, that it looks terrible. And I've been saying, well, just wait. We can't, you know, we've got to take the streetlights out of there, we've got to take the palms out of there, we're waiting for the Landscape Committee. But in reality, I'm, I'm wondering whether Matt LaBorde would have a discussion with Cal and make, do some kind of a credit for the, that section that they haven't, that you haven't maintained.
Well, like I said, we have been maintaining the, the turf, which we've always maintained the turf. That's no different.
But you clearly haven't been, and it's not your fault, it's just the circumstances. But there are certain aspects of this that hasn't been maintained because of what we've faced. And therefore, I think it would be reasonable to ask for a credit.
Well, let me, tomorrow, when we get to work, I will forward an email to Matt and also to our regional manager, and let them sit down, discuss it, and get back with you guys.
Particularly if we're going to vote in favor of Mainscape on this.
Cool.
And the nice thing, you will know, is on our bid, we did include our maintenance. We did not charge you any additional maintenance.
You did.
For the year.
That's something, if my colleagues support Cal talking to Matt LaBorde, trying to get a credit, that would be helpful.
Okay. Chair would like a motion to approve this recommendation for Mainscape in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, what, twenty-four dollars. May I have it? The motion may have a second.
Second, sure.
Go ahead.
Why, why don't I, this is for Gateway. Let's, let Rod make the motion. Will you make the motion?
I'll make the motion, of course.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, if there's no further conversation.
To the extent that you would have done had we kept things in place.
The only thing that was removed were the royals, so we've still been maintaining the turf.
A lot of residents, and it's not your fault.
Right.
A lot of residents have complained, certainly to me as a supervisor, that it looks terrible, and I've been saying, well, just wait, we can't, you know, we've got to take the streetlights out of there, we're gonna take the palms out of there, we're waiting for the landscape committee. But in reality, I'm, I'm wondering whether Matt La Borda would have a discussion with Cal and make, do some kind of a credit for the, that section that they haven't, that you haven't maintained.
Well, like I said, we have been maintaining the, the turf, which we've always maintained the turf. That's no different.
But you clearly haven't been, and it's not your fault, it's just the circumstances, but there are certain aspects of this hasn't been maintained because of what we faced, and therefore I think it would be reasonable to ask for a credit.
Well, let me, tomorrow, when we get to work, I will forward an email to Matt and also to our regional manager and let them sit down, discuss it, and get back with you guys.
Particularly if we're gonna vote in favor of Mainscape on this.
Cool.
And the nice thing, you will know, is on our bid, we did include our maintenance. We did not charge you any additional maintenance.
You did.
For the year.
That's something, if my colleagues support Cal talking to Matt La Borda trying to get a credit, that would be helpful.
Okay. Chair would like a motion to approve this recommendation for Mainscape in the amount of 97,000, what was it, $24? May I have it? The motion may have a second.
Second, sure.
Go ahead.
Why don't I, this is for Gateways. Let's, let's, let's run. Make the motion. Do you make the motion?
I'll make the motion, of course.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, if there's no further conversation.
There is, there is more, there is one comment, and that is the question, the matter of funding this. The 97,000 for verification should come out of the road turnover capital budget.
Mm-hmm.
Is that where you understand it?
Sure.
Thanks.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, four zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we're now ready for staff reports. Mr. Press, our counsel, would you have things for us?
Yeah, a few items, if I may. The, tomorrow morning, I'll be having a conference call with Mr. Chris Shields. He's the attorney for the Villas of Gateway Greens to go over my comments concerning and discussion about whether or not we still need to have individual easements for the backyard drainage easement. My reading of the documents indicates we do, but we'll have that conversation tomorrow. See if we can do it easier, then appreciate what Ed Tinkle did in the past. He prepared all the legal descriptions, but we still may need to go that route. So I'll have that conversation tomorrow. Uh, the, on the AED protocol, have, I've been, it's been frustrating trying to work with local emergency service providers and fire districts. They've not responded to my phone calls, so we're gonna reach out to some other fire service areas to get some ideas on their protocols so we can bring this back to the board as soon as possible. That's, we're trying to do that.
Would you explain in, uh, two sentences or less for the, the audience exactly what you're talking about?
Oh, on the AEDs, uh, automatic external defibrillators, the board has, in, in concept approved, uh, bring, having the staff prepare and bring back to the board for consideration and adoption, a policy and protocol for the acquisition, placement, and maintenance of external, uh, automatic external defibrillators at the district offices, the commons pool, and the Sherman Soccer Complex, along with a, a training program for the staff. Uh, and, and our insurance carrier, we had a discussion, Scott Connell, when he was here, he and I had a conversation with our insurance carrier. We offered a number of different protocols, or just all kinds of different protocols out there. I'm gonna bring it back to the board before the board embarks on that particular journey, uh, because the board is committed to doing that for the citizens and residents of the community at those facilities. That was three sentences, I think.
It was. The board's committed to, uh, considering what you bring back.
Yes, sir.
If we're not committed to actually the, to the external defibrillators at this time.
You'll evaluate at the time we bring back the policy and protocol.
Thank you. You really don't look happy. South Trail wouldn't respond?
I've not had a phone call back from them yet, no. I know, I'm surprised. I will try again.
We have a phenomenal relationship with South Trail. They provide their fire truck, get every holiday event, et cetera. Fabulous guys. We respond in kind with cookies and some pizzas and some other stuff, et cetera.
But Tony's an attorney calling, they're...
That may be, and I was trying to be nice, and I was explaining why.
All right, so here's what I'm saying, April. Send him some cookies. I would think that possibly if April called and introduced herself as the new operations person, et cetera, that we might be able to get a little bit of motion here. Good idea. Would you put that...
No problem, and I use my nice attorney voice as opposed to the mean attorney voice.
I didn't know you had one.
It could be very pleasant, yes.
Second item, Mr. Manager, or Mr. Attorney?
Just a second one, the, uh, in Pelican Reserve, there was a questions about how the utilization of the remaining funds from the 2013 refunding. I'm trying to establish and sent out an email to establish a conference call with Danny Nelson, myself, April, and or Cal, and Stephen Blum, Nancy Hall from the Pelican Reserve Advisory Committee, to, and the bond council, to discuss the possible utilization and approaches on those remaining funds. So hopefully we can set that up for next week and come back to the board with the report.
Uh, thank you. Tony, um, we mentioned the road turnover a few minutes ago. Can you give us a, a, a quick hitter on how much paperwork you're gonna have to produce and has it been started and how long is it gonna take?
Yeah, my, I haven't gone back and looked at it exactly, but my recollection was the, Lee County will require, you know, various conveyance documents and title work for that. The documents themselves are, are easy to prepare, the title work, and I've not yet ordered that because typically in a, in a transaction, title work has to be current within a certain period of time of the transaction, or else you have to order it again and have it updated. So as opposed to incurring additional costs, I've held off until we get closer to the point in time, which probably should be another month or so, I'll order the title work and begin the document preparation.
And after you begin the document preparation, how long do you think it'll take you?
It won't take that long, and then I can just submit that to Lee County for the review. It'll take me just a day, a couple days to prepare the documents.
Question for the attorney. Soccer, please?
Oh, I was gonna, I wasn't sure if April was gonna do that or not, but, uh, on, on Fairway Lakes, we've not forgotten Fairway Lakes and the streetlights. Again, April has come on board and she's at the deck running, and sometimes the deck has heaved up and down, uh, as the waves have crashed over the deck. And, uh, so we are going to get together to focus on the Fairway Lakes and have a recommendation for you, if not the next board meeting, the meeting after that.
What's the recommendation for?
Fairway Lakes, streetlights, Fairway Lakes, the FPL.
Yes, I understand. What's the recommendation for? The lights have been fixed.
Well, the question is whether we have a continual obligation and what we do about conveyance.
Correct.
Okay, as far as, as far as taking on the maintenance?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I just wanna be sure, because they have been fixed.
I understand.
Like, who owns it?
That's correct. That whole question about if not, do we wanna keep them and how do we arrange for the continual maintenance of that?
I understand.
And, um, on the soccer agreement, there's a memorandum. I apologize for the lateness of that. Uh, and the recommendation from, from staff is to authorize the chairman to initial the agreement as, as revised by Mr. Allison, uh, so as to continue the utilization of the fields by the current program, uh, the, and then work with Mr. Allison between now and August to see if, you know, can come to a further accommodation, then decide further as how to proceed.
I have a comment on that.
Please.
Yeah. Um, this is a sensitive issue, that we've got a bit of a standoff going here. Allison is clearly saying he's not gonna disclose his financials, and, you know, we have to ask ourselves, well, what are we gonna do with the financials if we got them? On the other hand, we can't have la cie dictating terms to the landlord either. And, and then the other part of the equation is that we don't wanna damage a very, um, a very healthy kids program, and I feel that as a supervisor. I don't wanna do anything that's gonna damage a, a soccer program that's taken years to build. So what we have to figure out is a middle ground, some kind of a way for, and I'll, I'll talk to Mark, I meet him in Starbucks every few months, but formally, I think staff has to find some kind of a middle ground that, that, that both parties can live with.
Yes. We agree and we're working towards that objective. It's, uh, we're still a long ways off, and it could, that's why we looked at August, which probably in his mind is a little early, but I think that Gateway needs to know where we're going with this, where other options can be considered, uh, because I think the board, everybody, the ultimate goal is to be able to provide a opportunity for the kids to play soccer.
It is, and, you know, it, the, the problem here, unlike Cape Coral and some other parts of Lee County, all our, like, all our eggs are in two baskets, black football and GSA, and it's a massive vacuum if they went somewhere else. And now we're, we're spending 250 grand a year on soccer fields with nobody playing on them. So we've gotta figure out what we wanna do, and there, there might be ways to bring Lee County into this discussion.
Sure.
And, and I, I've already had some offline discussions with the powers that be there to see whether we can sum our joint forces, and I encourage, of course, already 40% of the players out, people don't, do not live in Gateway. So that would make sense, does it consider that route as well?
Gary, I heard, I saw what, I think, size.
Pan, I mean.
Um, in line with this, the tenant not dictating to the landlord, who is losing an awful lot of money every year to maintain these assets of ours, but yet we've got a tenant who refuses to give us the financials, and you talk about an established relationship. We're following in line with a relationship that's been ongoing for 20-plus years. We now have a new tenant that's starting to try to change everything, but we're the one that's really spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to maintain our assets, yet he's dictating the terms. In addition to that, I believe he's also changing the insurance coverage policy as well. How much longer do we keep listening to this party dictating the terms to us when we're losing hundreds of thousands of dollars on maintaining these things? And then what would be the next thing? Sooner or later, you have to put the brakes on, and you have to look at that person and say, that was enough. So, the, the big loss here, last but not least is, as Roger said, 40% of the people that are participating don't even live in Gateway, yet we just spent how many minutes on discussing the possibility of people going into the pool that don't live in Gateway any longer, yet we know that 40% of this particular group are not Gateway people. So we're losing all this money to accommodate a person that's dictating new terms, and only 60% of the participants are even part of Gateway. Members of the board, it pains me to tell you that I regretfully do not agree with a, a good portion of what my colleagues just said. I don't think that we're losing money when we're spending it to maintain these soccer fields. I don't think we're losing the, uh, the concept of Gateway as a beautiful place to live by continuing a soccer program. While others may think it's important that we see the financials of this organization, I don't think it's, uh, important at all, and I will be very distressed if we don't continue our relationship with the soccer program. Margaret?
I have to agree. I know that previously we had wanted, when it wasn't the Gateway, I think it was, it was the Christian Soccer Association, there was a lot of requests to see their financials, and there was concerns over how much they were paying so-and-so to run the program, and I thought to myself, it's really not any of our business. And, and although I appreciate what Gary's saying is about the tenant, you don't ask your tenant to open up their, if you decide on a tenant to rent your house, you do not ask them to open up their checkbook and all their financials and see about them. You might run a credit check on them, but you don't ask them for all of their financials.
This isn't a residential rental, it's a commercial lease.
It was...
And a commercial lease, you're way off base, Margaret.
Well, you didn't make that clarification. You just said tenant, and so I took it for, in a different direction, but I still, my, my personal issue is, is that I don't have to see their financials. If we do not think that we're charging them enough to use our fields, then, then we need to look at user fees. But as far as, as looking at their financials and deciding whether they're paying us enough money, I, I don't see where that helps us. It's user fees that we're talking about, and that's what, what, where we are as a governmental entity, we need to be looking at our user fees, and if those aren't accurate, then that's what we need to look at.
Then when do we look at them? Or is it something, again, that gets pushed to the back of, we haven't got time?
Well, the parks, the, the soccer fields are parks. Parks don't make mon, if you are looking at the soccer fields and the pool and the fun park, to make money for Gateway's, Gateway District, you're looking in the wrong place because parks do not make money. Ask the city, ask the county. They don't, they never even break even. There are amenities that make the community nice, and that is an amenity that makes the community nice. People like that it's there, they wanna buy in Gateway because it's there, and I don't want to see those soccer fields not being used because then, then it is a waste.
I think, I think there is an, I would like to support an idea of the staff looking at more diversified use of the fields, not having all our eggs in two baskets in the, down the road. I, I agree with Bill, we shouldn't try and destroy a good program that's working for the kids. But I think the, the staff, as part of this review, should, should consider talking to Lee County, because I do know that they, they are short of facilities for their soccer programs around Lee County, and they may be interested in some kind of shared usage of our facility here, and we get more user fees as a result. And I, and I would encourage that. I don't see what's wrong with joining forces with Lee County, considering that 40% of the users are already from outside Gateway. I, I've had discussions with, with Compendigrass and, and the sports director, and, and they, I think, would be willing to engage in some discussions on that, if it makes sense.
Mr. Manager, could you, have those discussions, please? The next, Mr. Attorney, are you finished?
Yes, I think we need to have a motion to author and a vote to approve, authorize the chairman to initial the soccer agreement in those three locations as revised and in the materials that were provided yesterday.
I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, please? I have a second. Mr. Senior is the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, four zero. Thank you very much. Are you finished now?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Engineer, front and center.
Yes, for the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech District Engineer. I have one item on the agenda, and I have a second item not on the agenda, I just wanna give an update, but, um, at the last board meeting, we looked at, we had put together a conceptual plan for, um, this operations building for a potential expansion, and the direction of the board was to look at costing. Now, this is just budgetary, conceptual, um, costing, and this is, uh, you know, we're just looking for your consideration. There's no motion that's necessary, but if this is something that the board would like to move forward with in the future, you've at least got information. I, I think, um, as at least Mr. Senior would agree, I, I think there are probably some questions that you need to answer as what the future of your, your needs are as far as staff and that sort of thing, before you possibly start, you know, doing this, but at least this is something for budget purposes since we're entering that time, if this is something you wanna do in the near future or the long-term, uh, future. At a minimum, though, I will say, we, you know, we do have building issues that, that need to be, um, addressed, so regardless, and, and those items are, are on here as well, but, um, you know, one of the items to, the, it was discussed previously about the possibility of sprinklering the building, um, and we did get a cost where we, I, Tetra Tech didn't, but the district had gotten a cost to actually sprinkler the existing space, and I think that quote was around 35,000 for the additional space. We increased that to, to 50,000. So anyhow, you've got those costs in front of you, it's just a range, and that range is dependent on to what level you actually wanna take it if you decide to move forward. So, that's all I have.
Please, please stay at the podium. Questions, Danny? I have one.
Yes, sir.
As I look at your diagram, uh, it, it seems to me that this is a reflection of what we talked about at the last meeting.
Yes, yes, sir.
In answer to my question at that time, you said, please correct me if I'm wrong, that we could expand this, I'm gonna talk, these, from two to three bays with the land area that we have back there, is that correct?
You would add a, another bay.
A third one?
Essentially, you have three. You would add another bay, you would actually have two full usable bays. Right now, you have one usable bay.
Right.
So, but you would actually have two bays as opposed to, to three. You would add another bay, you would have two, you currently have, um, three bays, if you will, but you really only have one usable bay. So you would end up with two usable bays in this case. If that makes sense.
I didn't ask, I didn't ask that right. Is it possible to put another one on the building in addition to what you have in this diagram?
It would be, it would be getting, I, I'm not positive, and the reason why I'm not positive is, um, you have setbacks that you're getting, you're getting pretty close to your property line, you've got setbacks you'd have to maintain, so we'd have to look at that and see if the feasibility of, of doing that.
Well, okay, the reason I ask, at some point, Mr. Newbauer...
Yep.
...had indicated that we might want to consider doing some of our maintenance, lawn maintenance in-house.
Right.
Which would require...
Right.
...some equipment, and I was just trying to think ahead as to whether or not it made any sense to... There's a plan for that to, wherein we could have additional, at a rather low cost, that would be over here, which would house equipment.
And in fact, he has that in the table. He has an outdoor storage area that's in the, in the table.
I saw that.
Yeah.
I thought that was just for existing...
Generators and things like that. No, it, it could, it could house lawn equipment.
Yes.
I will say, I mean, we can certainly take a site plan and see how much further we can take the building out. That's a relatively easy thing to, you know, to do.
Well, I'm not gonna ask you to spend that extra money if it makes no sense. That's easily added on at a later date, if that's a decision. Any other questions for Danny? Thank you very much. You have one other issue, I believe?
Yeah, just a...
Item, I'm sorry.
A verbal update, and I'll, we'll come back to the board at the next meeting with a memo, and just wanted to update the board on where we stand with the, the SRF process, the facilities plan. As we're, we're gonna be nearing, bringing a document before you, uh, we have a draft facilities plan of the technical, it's being reviewed by some of my senior engineers. Stephen is also working, there's a financial component, so Stephen is working on that. We have also talked to DEP about where we stand, because if you recall, we submitted the request for inclusion, that was the, that was essentially the application that got the process rolling, and they've confirmed they have that, we are in their system, there's nothing more that they need to do at this time. There's nothing more that they need to do at this time. Our next steps are to complete the facilities plan. Once the facilities plan is completed and staff and, and Gateway is accepting of that, it will come before this board for formal approval. That's a process that, at that point, would go to, to SRF. So there would be a public hearing that would have to be advertised and that would be at a regularly scheduled meeting. And then a resolution adopting or accepting the facilities plan. So the facilities plan, the adopting resolution and the advertisement would then go as a package to DEP. Once DEP receives it, they'll, they'll review the facilities plan and they'll send the, the facilities plan out to other state agencies that may have involvement like DEP, DOT. Every state agency gets a chance to look at it. Some of them won't apply, like DOT will, will get it. But DOT, DOT will say, we don't have any roads in Gateway, it doesn't affect us. Thank you very much. That's called the clearinghouse process. Once they're satisfied with that, it will go on their public hearing. They have, they have two public hearings every year, sometimes they have three. They always have one in February and they always have one in July or August. So essentially what our deadline will be to get the facilities plan and package to them will be in the June timeframe. That will give them the time to have it reviewed and to get it on their August public hearing. Once that takes place, then we can have the packages ready for bidding. They'll have requirements of documents that have to go into the package supplemental conditions that will go out to the bidders with information that are required like Davis Bacon and, and that sort of thing. At that same time, you can go through the actual loan application process. So I'll, I'll come back with a memo. Just wanted to update you where, where we're at and what that process entails. But the timing is good and then I think the reins have kind of helped with that because the next, you know, we couldn't get anything on their agenda until August anyhow.
Am I correct in assuming that at some point you are going to send to Mr. Bloom some of these details so he can do some pricing for us?
Yeah, well, he's, he's working on the financial side and it's financial information about the district and, and what we'll do within the next, probably within the next couple of weeks. We'll actually, we can send him the facilities plan itself, which has cost estimates and, and those sort of things for, for the project, certainly.
Questions for Danny?
Yeah. A few months ago, Danny, we had Joe De Cerbo's recommended guy standing there, Corbett Alday, who you know very well.
Yes.
And he excited the board members at the time by suggesting you could get us a zero interest SRF loan or something very close to zero. When would be a good time to invite him back?
I would probably say the April timeframe because what I would like is maybe the first meeting in April. What I would actually like is to, to have the facilities plan on the agenda at either the second meeting in April or the first meeting in May for the public process and the, and the accepting of it. And I think maybe before that would be a good time. And we can certainly get a copy of that over to, over, you know, to Corbett to, to take a look at in advance.
So what kind of date should I have in mind for Corbett to be coming back?
I, I would say that the first meeting in April would be a good timeframe to have him come back.
April 7th, then?
Is that, is that whatever date that is?
What's the first date, what's the first meeting in April?
Seven.
Okay. Are we going to invite Corbett Alday for that then, meeting then, Carl?
If you would like.
Mr. Chairman, what do you want to do?
I think that's fine. If, if Danny thinks now is the time, I'll respect his professional judgment.
Yes, sir.
Shall we have the manager make the connection?
Sure.
Mr. Manager, will you please do that?
You got it.
Thank you. Danny, anything else?
No, sir.
Anything for Danny? Thank you, sir. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this, this proposed office expansion, twelve hundred square feet. To me, it's a, it's kind of a repeat of what I said two weeks ago. It comes back to Carl's proposal. You know, with this comes the human side of it. To me, we've got to, we've got to figure out what our organization is going to look like. Are we going to handle in-house maintenance, for example? What, how many people are we going to have over the coming few years? If we're all going to be on the board for a few years, whoever's, we've got to think about the management organization. Who's going to be in these offices before we build them? And I think that your idea of a workshop is, is a great idea and I think we should do it. And all this goes hand in hand. I'm not comfortable expanding an office unless we know who's going to be in it.
And I think the purpose of this is to give you an idea of, one, is it feasible? The answer is yes. And then two, the estimated cost for the size that you'd be looking at. I, I certainly wouldn't even support moving forward with anything at this point. I think it's too early. But at least you know that this is an option that you have.
Well, keep plugging, Carl, because I'm in favor of your workshop idea.
Okay. Thank you, Danny.
I must leave.
Okay. There you go.
Is there any news on that thirty-five thousand overrun from KCCS? Or is that in their hands?
They have provided the backup and we forwarded it to, to Gateway. So we probably need to discuss it. But they provided, they provided all the man hour backup and everything for that as the board had asked for.
And is that going to come to the board at the next meeting or when?
I, I think, yeah, it was too early to bring it back to, to this.
I received it. I didn't realize that it was coming back to the board. All it is, all it is is time sheets.
Well, I guess we may need to look at the minutes from what was.
I didn't, I didn't realize. I, I thought, I thought we had, I thought we had made the.
Was it contingent upon?
The change order contingent on getting, the district getting that backup. And I have that backup and it's just waiting for the margin boys because that's when it's going to show up and build.
Yeah, I don't.
Well, if, I'm certainly personally interested in seeing that backup. I'd like to see how the thirty-five thousand overrun was spent.
Well, that, the documentation that we, we received isn't going to show that because it's just time sheets.
It's, yeah, it'll, it'll show you that individuals worked, that there, it won't be a detailed breakdown of exactly what they did, but you'll see the level of, of individual and, and you'll know, well, this was an inspector level, this was administrative. So you'll see that level. They're, they're simply time sheets.
Okay.
Well, shouldn't they be able to provide that breakdown? Shouldn't they be able to provide a detail of what they actually billed us for rather than just say, oh, thirty-five sounds good?
Well, keep in mind, if, if that was something that was, you know, would have been a requirement at the time that they were preparing those, we're going back, we're going back a few months now. So they would, there, certainly there are emails, there are ways to, to kind of reconstruct to a degree what they did. Daily reports in the field, internal correspondence, things like that. So we could certainly ask for that additional information. And we probably have the daily reports, you know, already.
I, I think there's a, there's some responsibility on their part to justify the overrun to, to the board here that's approved it.
We'll, we'll certainly ask for it.
There's a follow-up to that, I mean, Mr. Chairman, I think it's appropriate for the board to request and require that of them. Because it was outside the scope of the contract and the board has after the fact authorized that, those services. So I think it is appropriate.
We'll, we'll ask for it.
Okay, so I'm not providing the time sheets right now. We're going to ask for additional information and then, and then I can compile that together and then send it out to you.
Does that need a motion?
No, I don't think it does.
I, I think your, your direction previously was sufficient enough.
One real quick, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, before Danny leaves, Tyler Wainwright, who must be watching the meeting, hello Tyler.
He is.
Was, was kind enough to forward me an email from Lee County, WCI, with regards to turnover process, emails going back to February with John Fedema about what the county is requiring, including a survey and that kind of work. So I'll get with John Fedema so we can get that ball rolling from the district's perspective and maybe coordinate with WCI's engineers on any survey work that may need to be performed. Yeah, they, they, you know, and so there, and Rick Bylansky even offered to say, hey, let's have a meeting with everybody so we can coordinate together with all the parties. We will do that with, I'll work with Danny in April and Tyler.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, you're up.
Yes, sir. Just to update the board, utility manager, we have gone through and we invited seven candidates and four interviews. All seven had extensive experience in utility management. Two were PEs and two, because of the salary, opted not to interview. So we physically interviewed five. And we have two that we're real impressed with. One is a PE and the other one is not. And we're going to conduct just a little more research on them and also have another round of interviews with the two candidates. The, that's where we're at. And I just wanted to make sure if the, the board had anything that they would like to know at this time, then I'll share that with you.
Tell us about the guy that isn't an engineer.
Extremely impressive. Extensive experience working with boards, elected boards. He has experience in planning, creating capital improvement plans, various different detailed reports. He, he has, he owns currently his own operations firm in Vermont. His son's running it right now. He started it and it's, it's, all three of us were blown away by the qualifications and the presentation and, of this individual.
Do you intend to share these two, the resumes of these two individuals with the board or are you just going to recommend the preferred candidate?
I'm okay with sharing. Tony, do you see any issues with sharing the resume with the board?
Your public records.
Okay. We can send that.
It's a pretty key position. I don't mean to interfere with the process.
Sure.
I'm genuinely interested in the, in the difference between the engineer and the non-engineer here.
Yeah.
You'll take care of that, have that.
Yes.
Send out to us the next few days, please. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
Uh, no, sir, just, we're looking at either April or May on a workshop, but if that works for you.
Well, you, you were going.
Yes.
Canvas says about our free dates.
And I, I haven't done that, I'm sorry. It's only been two weeks.
Maybe go to the financial report. Steven, would you join us, please? Would you point out anything of your financial report that you think we ought to hone in on, please?
Oh, sure. Let me just do kind of like a top level. First, Steven Bloom, Severn Trent. A couple of things. First off, starting on page fifty-five, wanted to mention you got ninety-one percent on your tax or your assessments collected, which is about a hundred and sixty-four thousand more than where you were last year at this time. So that's kind of a, a good thing to show.
Now, we have more residential units too.
Oh, yeah. Yes, well, you have more that you budgeted. But again, that's more cash in to the system. Just kind of looking at variances, one variance that I wanted to mention, under swimming pool, the utility services is well, you know, or well on its way of exceeding budget. That is a function of us splitting the departments. Meaning if you look above under parks and recs, that utility service is well under budget. It's kind of a flushing out process as we divide those departments. But I did want to mention that just so that if anyone's looking at it, it looks odd, well, you know, why would utility services?
We're going to do something about that.
We can, oh, yeah, absolutely. Another interesting thing on here, propane and natural gas is actually showing a positive variance. It's one of the things we've, we talked about during the budget process. It's actually showing favorable variance right now. We'll see how that goes.
It's been the whole year.
Maintenance and repairs, we did not budget for all of those repairs. So we are, we'll have to see how the rest of the year plays out. But, you know, we're at about eighty-four percent and that's, that's still on page fifty-eight. Right at the bottom there under streetlight services, that's just another variance I wanted to point out. Overall, you know, the general fund is doing very well. You know, usually it's very top-heavy in the first quarter or two quarters of the year because that's when you get a lot of your assessments. But when you look at where your spending is, you're at about twenty-seven percent of your budget. And looking at it in a level platform, you would be at about thirty-three percent. So your spending is doing very well. That was kind of zero, zero, one or your general fund. Didn't really have a whole lot in any of the other funds to mention other than that on zero, zero, two, or, or which is the Pelican Preserve and that starts on page, I'll give you a page here, sixty. Just wanted to remind everyone that we do have some expenditures that are not budgeted that were approved projects. And this will become a part of our budget amendment process, the pond aeration and the pond improvements. That's just something that was approved and we just need to do an amendment for it to fix it with our budget. This is, again, just as a reminder, carrying forward, you know, projects from prior years that the pond committee had asked for and we'll take care of that. That's zero, zero, two. Let's see, I did want to mention on the enterprise fund, kind of wanted to touch base. Give you a page on that, Cal. Starts on page seventy-one. Just wanted to touch on revenue. When you look at where you are year-to-date versus year-to-date budget, you are short a little bit in a couple of these areas. When this, this particular year-to-date is kind of, you know, based on a, a level playing field. We'll have to keep an eye on that to see how, as summer months come in, if, whether or not we catch up on that. But I did want to mention, when you compare it to, again, where you were last year, water revenue is up, irrigation is about level and then sewer is a little bit down. But overall, you know, from where you were last year, you're up about ten thousand dollars in revenue. That's kind of top level.
A year or so ago, Mr. Burton, our manager for rates, indicated that we might experience as much as a seven percent increase in water revenue with these new meters, as I recall. I don't see evidence of that yet. Do you have any comment?
I would wait until the full meter replacement program is done before we really can see what, what the incremental amount is. Now, again, it should be two different things because, again, your rates change each January as well. So it's, it's, you know, it's hard to tell right now until that program is complete and, you know, in there for enough, long enough period of time where we can get some data on that.
Are you finished with this?
For that particular item, yes.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
The only other item, I mean, we included on here a budget amendment.
Okay, but, but hold on that.
Sure, okay.
Just a second. I wish I had written down the page number of that thirteen bond issue.
Eighty-five, page eighty-five.
Thank you. Board members, this is the item that our attorney told us a little bit ago he's going to have a meeting with Nancy Hall and others. The balance in this construction fund is still a million, almost a million three and it's no, but no charges have gone against it for several years. And there's, but there is possibility that there will be some charges against it. And so we're not going to be able to bank on spending the whole million three. But we are going to talk to the, help me, the attorney.
Bond counsel to, to help us give, provide an opinion or some guidance as to whether or not the, any remaining, how the funds can be utilized, basically, based upon the engineer's report from two thousand and thirteen and desire to do other projects, not necessarily particularly described. But we'll have that conversation as to what latitude the board has or what obligations and/or latitude.
And after those, hopefully by next month, you and Steve can agree on some kind of footnote we can put on this statement to indicate to anyone who might read it that this million three is not totally unencumbered, I guess.
That'd be part of our discussions to get that guidance also.
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Questions? Hey, are you ready to talk to us about your budget revisions?
All right, sir.
I've got questions on the financials. Is this a good time?
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry.
All right.
All right.
I thought I.
Page fifty-two, Steven, of the agenda.
I'm not there.
Okay, general fund capital projects column. Way down at the bottom, fixed asset reserves is at zero. And in the approved budget for 2016, we're going to transfer 255,144 into the fixed asset reserve. Why is it not there?
Uh, we don't do that till closer to year end.
Okay.
Once all the assessment money comes in, but to answer the first part of it, your, your fund balance is showing up under restricted for capital projects.
Yes, 2.043.
Yes, that's, that's your balance.
I just wondered why, so why did we not start with a balance in fixed asset reserve before the 255 is allocated?
This is a function of switching the type of fund. If you remember, this particular, all, all of the, the capital spending was being done through the general fund.
Yeah.
And because of that type of fund, it was showing up in a different place.
Oh, I see.
On the balance sheet.
Okay, which takes me, I got it. Page sixty-eight, sixty-eight. Excuse me, let's get this straight. No, it's not page sixty-eight, it's page fifty-three.
Fifty-three?
Yeah, my apologies, fifty-three. In the approved budget for 2016, we're talking about the enterprise fund now, okay? We're, we're transferring in the approved budget 271,000 into the fixed asset reserve for the enterprise fund. That's in the approved budget for 16. Where is that fixed asset reserve line item on, on the liability sheet for the enterprise fund?
Again, that's.
Page fifty-four is where I'm looking at.
Right, it's going to, it's right in the column before enterprise. Again, we also have a separate capital project fund set aside, I'm sorry, not, two columns ahead. Capital projects, enterprise fund.
Okay.
And basically, you, you're, you just have your starting balance in there, 255, or your current balance.
And we're going to add 271 to the 255?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. Is there any more money intended to be put into that particular line item, because we're knee-deep in money due to the Lee County settlement?
There is nothing that's been approved, however, you know, if you look at page fifty-three, I think you actually guys probably on there, right there, you can see a, it's a line item called ICS.
ICS, yeah.
Which, that is what I would consider to be your excess funds, so you could probably put in there between a million and a million and a half.
Right, so there's.
Which really is the county refund when you look at it.
Exactly where I'm coming from, because we've got a utility manager coming aboard, and we've got to give him a capital budget to be able to start, get to work on our utility, and that is going to need a healthy capital budget.
Correct, yes, and we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to the amendment, but, but you are correct. That's where that would come from.
Yeah, page fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight?
Yeah, just highlighted this utility service. You eventually mentioned it, Steven, swimming pool. Why, why is it triple the year-to-date budget? The utility service on the swimming pool has gone 2,000 to 6,300.
Well.
What's happening there?
The, the 2,000 is a function of when we split the department, you know, estimating how much should be in there, and I didn't put enough in there.
Okay, so it's just.
It's just, it's just a reclass from the parks and wrecks above, because if you look at the parks and wrecks above, it's got the excess still there.
I guess what's missing is the year, the year previous to date, which we don't see.
And, and that's kind of, because we just split out the departments.
Okay, that's all I've got to ask, thank you.
But, you know, we'll pull some utility bills and see if we can.
I just wondered if we were way over last year, for example?
No, you're, you're not, because when you, really, if you combine them, that's what, you know, where you were last year, if you combine both the departments, and you're fine.
Any other questions for Steve? Would you please, I'm sorry, would you please present your budget revisions?
Okay, so the budget amendment, the resolution's on page 91, the, the support behind it is on page 92, and, and again, this is kind of starting the process. We put together the, the resolution, put together this entire budget amendment, but really, I, we wanted to present this, whether it gets approved, you know, this meeting or the next meeting is obviously up to the board, but the idea is, is that there were projects that were started last year, and the projects were not completed, and we've been keeping track of them and making sure that we, you know, have an idea on what's been committed, as well as what's been planned, and again, obviously, the plan portion can change based on, on, you know, how the board decides, but the idea being is, is that at the end of last year, those, the budget amounts lapsed. So this amendment would add back all those projects that are still pending or outstanding into your current year budget, and also show you what you would have left over in your reserve fund. So what this would do, if you kind of scroll down a little bit, your total new budget would be a little bit under 2.1 million dollars. Now, your starting reserve balance for the general fund was 2.2, so what this means is that if you did everything that has either been started or been planned, you would only have, you know, about $100,000 left over at the end of the year in your, your reserve account.
However, because of the weather and the rain and everything else, we're not going to be able to do.
No, and again, this, this also still keeps up 700,000 for Lake Bank restoration, which if you, if you use the loan to cover that, then obvi, I mean, again, I just wanted to present everything, put it into a big picture, and then some of these projects you might not still want to do, like the pool rehab, you know, that was something that's got started, maybe you don't do it till next year, but I, I just wanted to make sure we had something on paper so that there were no surprises and then to kind of start the discussion, especially as we're, you know, unfortunately getting closer to the budget season and farther away. This is kind of a, a resolution that would kind of set all that stuff up, you know, again, like the stormwater was barely touched last year, that's $600,000. Obviously, we're still working on the road turnover. Between those two, you know, by itself, you're talking about a million two, so that's, that's quite a bit of money that, that you're looking at, and wanted to make sure that you had all of the information.
Thank you. Questions for Steve? May I have a motion to adopt the resolution, adopting the proposed budget amendments? As you see it on page 91.
I'll make a motion to approve it, if for no other reason for discussion purposes.
Do I have a motion for a second?
I'll second it for discussion, yes.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Margaret, since she made the motion, gets to do her discussion first, please.
Okay.
Have I should like to put it on?
No, that's fine. I, I just, I guess what we need to do is, before we just blanket approve this budget amendment, is to really make a decision if we really want to actually include all of these projects. You know, maybe we need to, um, place a criteria on what we want to move forward and what we want to actually put on hold.
My understanding, Steve, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that these amounts represent decisions that have already been made, is that correct?
Some of them do.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the stormwater certainly does, your road turnover, you, you know, have several committed contracts for that. Pool rehab, no, not, you, you don't have anything formalized yet for that, but Griffin Road you do, so, but, you know, by adding these, it doesn't mean you can't subtract others, so it's, it's really not one or the other. Eventually, what has to happen at year end, you know, your total expenditures that you have, your outsources, your budget, you know, has to match that. That's really the, the only criteria, whether you adopt this now or, or spend some time looking for the projects more, you know, that's up to the board to do that, but you, certainly you have to have an amendment done by year end.
So actually, the pool rehab, then, is the only one that we don't have contractual obligations on, is that correct?
Yeah, and if, if you want to refer back to page 83, we've kind of split that out to show you what's actually committed on each project. Now, like, for example, for stormwater, you don't have the full 600,000 committed, however, I'm, I, you know, and not being an engineer, I'm not sure that you can stop that project midstream and not spend, you know, the rest or of the 443,000. Obviously, the road turnover, you are, really don't have much of a, an option with the, but stadium lighting, I mean, that's, that's something that's budgeted, we're not amending that budget, but it doesn't mean you're going to use that full 80,000 this year. Perhaps you put that off and decide that between the stadium lighting and the pool rehab, it's about 130,000 that you could, you know, address in a different year. So you certainly do have options, with the exception of these couple of projects that you are basically kind of committed to.
This doesn't restrict any of our options, does it?
It doesn't restrict your options, and it doesn't guarantee that you, just because you amend the budget to include a pool rehab, it doesn't supersede any of the other purchasing, you know, the district guidelines and policies and procedures, it just means you now have a budget for it.
And it doesn't mean to say you've got to go ahead and do it.
It doesn't, does, does not automatically give you authorization.
But this question of Griffin Drive came up two weeks ago. If you look at page 83, Steven, right at the bottom there, it looks like we spent $200,000 and we had 160 budgeted, so we're over by, by a lot of money there.
Correct.
This is the reason for this, this recommended motion, to include that over.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Because we're actually over, that's before any consideration of lighting.
Sure, oh, sure, yeah.
Right?
Right, now.
So we have to approve it.
You're going to have to approve it, but again, i- if you don't spend on the lighting, then you can, you know, basically use that 80,000 to cover your shortfall in other projects.
I don't mean lighting on the soccer complex, I meant there was, there was a discussion about lighting on Griffin.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
There, I think there, by the way, there's other ways we can get that done, perhaps we can lean on Lee County to, to have WCI put that in, so I'm not, I'm not automatically in favor of, of, of this district funding that lighting. That was one out of the three items that we missed out two weeks ago, if you remember. We approved two of them, but not that lighting. So I don't see anything wrong with approving this, it's not saying that we have to go ahead and.
Correct.
And, and, and spend the money, we say it's just, some of it is, is what we have to do anyway, because we've, we've overspent already.
Yeah, I, I really think the pool is the only one on here that I'm amending that, that has no committed anything to it. Everything, I mean, everything else on here is.
And what is, so what are we doing for 54,000 on the pool? What is the idea behind that? What are the main things that, what are we getting for our money there? Do you remember? What are the main things?
That, the, the last discussion was, I believe it was, I think it was Avon, he basically presented options, and that was really the last, and nothing went further.
Is it to do with ADA compliance and stuff we have to do this year, or?
No, this was intended to save on future propane expense by converting the pool to another, you know, and more efficient energy, so that your propane costs would go way down.
So we've already dealt with that.
And at the time, we thought that that was going to cause more.
So we can strike, strike that out?
Sure.
Can we, can we not strike that out, Mr. Chair?
Well, you can, if you, you want to, this, this, at this point in time, this is all a big bunch of actual expenditures and encumbrances for contracts and a bunch of things that we think are going to happen between now and the end of September.
Yeah.
It is not, we're, this is not all cast in stone at this moment.
It's not a blind, got to. Given that we've, we've decided to go with natural gas, this 54 should come out then, and we'll just live with the rest, it would seem to me.
We, we could do that.
We have no plan to do anything at the pool, right?
The, the cost to convert to natural gas, though.
Eight hundred bucks.
I thought it was 10.
Well, there's the, there's the, there's a capital outlay of $8,000 for the pipe.
And that's what this line item was intended for.
I see, okay.
Now, now, before, I, I don't want to.
Even if we move it, we don't just spend.
That's right.
Keep, keep in mind also, there's a, you know, the, there is a, the second page to the amendment, and I don't want that to get lost for the enterprise fund as well. It's, it's a much smaller amendment, but again, for, specifically for like the meter replacement project, you know, year end, the project wasn't completed, there's still some more spending that needs to be done, so we added that, amended that to make sure that we had that approved as we complete that project.
Seems like the motion stands then, and I'll second it.
All right, thank you very much. I have a, I have a motion and a second to approve these budget amendments. Steve, would you, before I call for a vote, would you look at page 91 with me for just a second?
Sure.
Item number two, resolution shall be effective 24th day of February. Can we change that to the 3rd day of March?
Sure.
With that adjustment, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
We have a board member. Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, supervisor comments? Gary? Ron?
Yes, one item, the websites. The website that we discussed two weeks ago, just to recap, the, the discussion's been ongoing since with Scott and with Diane, and now with you, April. The proposal was to consider Vista Logics, which have got a reputation and a good reference, which has been thoroughly vetted, certainly by me at other places. Comment was made at the board meeting two weeks ago that we should look and make sure that their charges are competitive, and I've, I've acted on that, I've reached out to the lady at Lee County, who's their webmaster, Denise Scott. I had an hour on the telephone with her, amazingly useful conversation. They use Vision Internet in California, and they paid $11,000 for their design.
As opposed to?
As opposed to our, our nine, yeah. And they have 80 different departments, all with their own webmaster. They have a pyramid of webmasters, all collating at the top to this lady Denise Scott. They have their own internal content management system, so they're, they are very wealthy in resources at Lee County, they don't have, we're, we're very thin on the ground, as you pointed out, Bill, here, in comparison. I also reached out to the city of Fort Myers Beach, okay, and they use, they use a different company, and their costs are as follows. Civic Plus is the name of the company, Civic Plus, they're based in Kansas, and I spoke to them at length. The cost of them producing a website for us, and this is a core off-the-shelf website, would be somewhere between 10 and 50,000. And in one case, they charged a company, a government, 430,000 for a website. Their annual fee for a community of 6,000 people, annual fee is $9,000, compared with Vista Logics of 2,400. I've had further discussions with Joe De Cerbo today, who speaks extremely highly of Brian Haas and Vista Logics. He made the point that his board of supervisors have, have been very happy with Vista Logics over the years, that they've had the Spring Lake website managed by Vista Logics. Their suggestion was made two weeks ago that we have had Brian come visitors in person or over the phone, that, I still encourage that. I think it's going to be important for us to move forward on this website sooner than later, because it will take the pressure off our staff. At the moment, we heard from Diane at the podium two weeks ago, sure, you know, the way we are, the company who provides our current website is very code-heavy, she, she has, she, it's not easy to manage the content. Content management, in the case of Vista Logics, is Microsoft-based, and it's easy. I think we need to move forward in our digital communications and our interactivity with the residents, as well as make our website more ADA-friendly for visual impaired and for people with motor skills that have difficulty with the mouse, et cetera. Vista Logics can do all that. Bill, I got your email, which is circulated to everybody, saying you don't think that this would be a good time, because we're in the throes of road turnover and water meter replacement. I'm not sure I totally am on the same page with you on that, because I'm not sure the same resources in this, of staff that's needed for this website are the same resources applied to road turnover and water replacement, and that's why I would want to raise this again today and ask Cal and April where you stand on this. Do you think this is a, do you think we should kick? Do you think this is a, do you think we should kick the can down the road on this with Vista Logics or whoever? Do you think the road turnover and the water meter replacement are in fact getting in the way of this?
I don't think, I don't think those two particular projects are getting in the way. What has transpired since we had that last conversation is Diane and I started looking at the overall IT infrastructure here, here at Gateway. And we have a lot of segregated components of, of IT. So one thing that we started looking at is, and it was mentioned last time we discussed, the website design, redesign, is seeing where Vista Logic was going to overlap with any existing IT softwares and services. And, and I don't think we do have that overlap. But what we did, what we did discuss is that right now, we did a little WebEx with, with Mr., Mr. Haas, and what we were concerned about is the amount of staff time that it was going to take. There was a couple of different options that was discussed with him, or, or different perspectives, I guess you could take, that if, if we expect him just to take our canned website, what we have right now, and redo that and put it on his software, it's going to take probably a minimal amount of Diane's time. I'm not going to have a lot of time to dedicate, get, dedicate to it because of all of the other issues. So I felt that it was going to overencumber Diane right now without at least looking at her responsibilities as a whole, and maybe trying to divert some of her responsibilities off the desk, so we can get her concentrating and working with, with Brian on this project. Because I think the idea is, we wanted, we want a website redesigned, so we don't want his, we don't want our website on his software. We want it redesigned. We, so I think that there's gonna have to be somebody sitting there and involved and getting, you know, giving him the ideas of, well, we would like to do this, we'd like to do that. And one thing that we haven't done is, we really haven't collectively, in a workshop level, came down, sat down and written down a program, where we would like the website to do this, we would like the website to do that. So we don't have that written parameter down for Diane to take off with and say, okay, well, this is what we want him to do, let's try to see if you can get it to look like that. So what I'm concerned with is that it's going to take an exceptional amount of her time, of us ping-ponging back and forth of what we want this plan to, or this, this website to look like. And that's where, that's where we came back, and we, we kind of put the reins on it and said, well, I don't know, maybe, maybe right now isn't the time. We've, we've got the huge, we've, we've, we've got the huge meter project going on right now, and, you know, Cindy and I were talking, and possibly maybe having, having a lot of ticking and tying done to finalize that, to make sure that we've got all of our ducks in a row and everything is done with that project, and possibly having to utilize staff to, to do that. We've got, you know, Diane's involved in taking all of, all of the minutes. She is the go-to person in the office right now, we've got new staff, I'm new, I'm trying to dig in, she's, she's constantly the go-to person. So what I'm concerned with is getting on board with Vista Logic and us not being able to have the dedicated resources to make this project roll out in the timeframe that you're going to expect it, because even, even as is, Brian's saying that it's a, it's a sixteen, sixteen-month, sixteen-month project, is it, sixteen?
Sixteen weeks.
Weeks, sixteen-week project.
I think, I think what you've said is perfectly reasonable. I totally accept what you're saying, so perhaps we should, we should roll this thing forward maybe one or two months and revisit it or something like that, whatever you feel comfortable with.
Okay.
I don't want it to disappear off the radar screen.
Okay.
Because I, I personally think it's really important for this district to move forward with a good digital and interactive website.
I agree with everything you just said.
Just let's, let's make sure that it doesn't disappear off the radar screen. And the other thing is that you said, that I, I think that we can, this rolls into this whole workshop, looking at our staff, what are their priorities? Who's gonna be looking, who's gonna be holding the baby on this thing? Is it Diane, or is it somebody else?
Right.
And we've got to figure that out, and that's, that's another reason for a workshop.
And in the meantime, you know, if, so it doesn't fall off of the radar, we can start accumulating the ideas and creating a document and start getting that down, and maybe visiting, you know, maybe reaching out to Lee County and say, hey, you know, help me design, how do I design this program, you know?
They're very, very helpful.
I, I, yes, I know, a lot, I have a lot of county resources there, and they have a very strong-
They do.
-IT criteria.
They have a lot more money than we do, too.
Yes, yes. But it is a philosophy there, that they have, that they have the best IT and the resources available.
That's a very, that's a perfectly reasonable response, thank you.
Okay.
Do you have other items tonight? Margaret?
I just had one, and that was, I know, we had talked about going after grant money, and we have a lobbyist.
Yep.
And we need an update from these people. So I'm requesting an update on our-
I did actually request an update and receive it. I should have brought it, and I didn't. I can read it off my smartphone, if you're prepared to wait two minutes for me to load it up. Essentially, it's all gonna happen in the next two weeks. There's been allotted, buying with, with Governor Scott on, on, on his requests, and the senators and the representatives are caving into Senator Scott's requests, so they can push through a lot of these water-based requests, 'cause there's a lot of focus on it with the Lake Gold stuff that's going on. You've read all about that. So there's a lot of focus on water quality, and I think things are, if anything, are tilting in our favor rather than against us. And a point, Sue Mullins is the lady who represents David Rambus, she wrote to me and said that what's like, what likely comes out of all this is our request for five million dollars adds up to all of the other, with all the other requests added together, what they do is prorate it. So if we get ten percent of that, then we get half, everybody gets ten percent. So half a million dollars or something like that will be the result. It's too early, but we'll, we'll know by definitely early April. I can't report, I could read it, but it won't say much difference.
Okay.
That's it, that's all I have.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for all your hard work. We've made a lot of progress. Tonight, we are adjourned.
The way they're taking their sausage-making and budget deals forward.
Yes, sir.
They're amazing, they're amazing to watch.
Stephen, don't run.
Always.
We gotta make sure to get the, Gary out.
Yeah, the legislature, Mr. Senior, they're getting into money issues, I mean, they-
They're at each other's throes this week.
Oh, my God.
Oh, I did have one, I understand.
They're forcing that, boxing, all that going on, and then this bill looks like it's mine, then it shows back up again.